All right, thank you. We will next proceed to roll call.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tendares?
Here.
Mayor Burbow?
Here.
All present.
All right, well, if you are attending in person or listening to the city council on one of our variety of access points, welcome. We appreciate you coming or listening. We will begin this evening on the terms of agenda items with our consent calendar. Consent calendars can are items that are considered routine and non-controversial by the staff and will be acted upon in a single motion by the city council unless otherwise requested by a council member for separate consideration. We will allow public comment on consent calendar items prior to taking action. With that, I'll ask if any of my colleagues on the council have any questions of staff or wish to pull an item.
I have a brief question on item number four.
Do you want to pull it or just ask the question?
No, I just want to ask the question to clarify its purpose.
Go ahead.
So on number four, the wastewater and infill infiltration study award, I just want to clarify if I'm correct in understanding that this is basic, that the work being done is to put sensors into the sewer pipes, sets of them, and be able to run up at various Y intersections and see where the extra water is coming in when we have events like last night's rainstorm. And so that we, and that the purpose of this is what, if I understand correctly, is to identify places where repairs could be made so that we don't have to spend many millions of dollars more in oversizing the wastewater treatment plant to accommodate rainfall that shouldn't be getting into those pipes in the first place. Is that a reasonable summary of what that work is going to be to do?
Yes, that's a great question, and that's exactly right. We'll put flow meters, probably 20 stations in two phases to try to track where wastewater or clear water is coming in during storms, wet weather flows, and then that'll help us narrow down those places, hopefully that we can find, you know, leaks in the system.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to, any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I'll open this up to the public for anybody who would like to comment on consent calendar items D1 through D4. Okay, seeing no one, we return it back to council for a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Funk, a second by councilmember Peak. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tendares?
Yes.
Mayor Burbow?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, then we will move on to, okay, hold on. We move on to updates from our city manager, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I have some great things, and there's a very busy fall ahead of us that I'm going to be sharing with you. So first, I want to celebrate our city, our management, your just good planning and fiscal prudence. Ms. Rangel and her administrative services department's amazing work. We did receive our, we issued our bonds, and so, as you know, you'd given us direction to do that, and we issued those bonds last Tuesday to the market. People couldn't get enough of Atascadero, let me just say that. We were selling $29 million roughly, which is what we need for our public safety facilities project. We had $80 million in bids, so that means our AA minus credit, which is a large testament to the work you do and Jerry and the staff was well-desired. And as a result, I had told you the interest rate would be around 4.9%. It dropped to 4.4%. So people were willing to invest in us at that rate, which is just tremendous. Our debt payment went from what I had shared with you prior to pretty much right at our budget from D20 funds. And so this is another promise made and promise kept by the city council of D20. The community wanted to see investment in public safety, in staffing and facilities. You've kept that promise, and so that payment is being made every year then for the next 30 years from D20 funds. And we thank the community, and we hope they'll share the pride you'll have in our new fire station, our renovated Fire Station Two, and our rehabbed police facility. So just a terrific result, and the amount that we ended up clearing is exactly the amount we need for the construction contract. So, Ms. Rangel, thank you to you and your department. It was a tremendous load of work. Yes, let's give her a thank you so much. Such a, it was, it's so fun, too, to watch the team just like get into the zone and spring into action, like she has done for the last several months. So you're awesome, thank you. So I wanted to start with that great news, and we are well and ready to go now with that project. Next, I want to share with the open house at City Hall. So this is October 21st from 3:00 to 5:00. This is not an open house to see art or the rotunda. You can do that on most other days, but this is specifically about the general plan update. And I really want to make sure people understand it's very unique to be engaged and around when the city updates its general plan. These are every 20-year things, and this is the roadmap and the guidebook for how our community will look, feel, and develop. So it's a very important document that all projects are tied to. And so we're coming to the finish line on the general plan. The Planning Commission will be hearing it on the 21st. The council will be hearing it on the 28th. These hearings will not be decision points. This is a final draft. It's a shot for the Planning Commission and the council to give it a good look, for the community to give it a good look, and then we'll have it out there for about 90 days as we complete the EIR after we receive comment from you. But we do encourage the public to come to the first floor from 3:00 to 5:00 to see how the general plan impacts you and our community for the future. So please do come to the open house, the 21st, from 3:00 to 5:00. Now, back to promises made, we're getting a lot of work done. This next slide, I hope shows, oh, well, there's the bonds. Hooray for AA minus, that was awesome. Okay, I could talk about those all day. This is, the council directed us last year to spruce up A-Town Park to continue to invest in young people, providing safe spaces, places where scooters and skaters could be. We have completed the resurfacing and asphalting of the backlot, so it's in great form for those activities that we've received the bid and have scheduled painting the building. As you can see, it's an interesting color there that's going to be painted in a way that much more resembles our community, I'll leave it at that, with a new bright awning that could be a certain color as well. So that work should be done here very shortly, and we will celebrate the investments at A-Town Park in the future, but thrilled that's getting, getting done this month. Next, we are paving, paving, paving. Thank you for daring the rain, councilmembers, as we celebrated projects getting accomplished. Santa Lucia Road is well underway, as you saw, and well-needed. The potholes were exacerbated in the rain today, so it was good we could see those one last time. Please drive slowly and follow all construction signage as you see Santa Lucia. The road segment between Portola Road and Cascabel was completed yesterday. Over the next two weeks, crews will be installing new edge improvements, including driveway aprons. Demolition of the road between Cascabel and Laurel to our new bridge, pretty much, is scheduled to begin this Thursday. This phase will include regrading, cement treatment, and paving that will continue through the end of the month, weather permitting. Pending favorable weather, it's on completion to be ready for Christmas time, so if Santa needs to make an emergency landing, that'll be a great place. Next slide, storm preparedness. So we just had some rain. The community weathered this storm well. It was a couple inches, it'll be just over two inches, depending on where you were, but we do want to remind people about storm preparedness. This tells us the rain is coming potentially. This is a good time. Our Public Works team works diligently to ensure that public infrastructure is ready for wet weather. What we're doing is cleaning storm drain inlets, stockpiling sand for residents, sweeping streets. We've done a lot of work on the storm drain inlets, by the way, trimming trees and parks and facilities, managing vegetation in large swales so they keep flowing. We've done a good bit of work there, and just making sure our infrastructure is ready for the storm. Just like for wildfires, people need to protect their home as well from storm events. So make sure your gutters and downspouts are clear. Make sure your yard drains away from your home. Drains can get covered, bent, turned, so give a good look to all those. Check and clear your drain pipes and culverts, just like we have done, removing debris from ditches and waterways, trim branches that are against your house, all these things. This will protect you, your neighbors, and responders, so it's really important. Fun events, the Halloween Spooktacular is coming to, this is a former employee who is awesome, Mark, and he does this for the community every year, and so we just had to throw it in here because when you retire from our city, you get one of these once in a while. It's a benefit. And so we're proud of him and thank him for what he does for free for our community. This is at 7720 Cortez Avenue in Atascadero, and it starts today, so maybe after the council meeting, you can, you know, go, or through Halloween at least. Fall Free Residential Waste Cleanup, we get asked about this a lot. This is the opportunity to drop off, no vouchers required. This is at the Slow County Transfer Station in Paso Robles from the 18th to the 25th, 7 to 4. And so you can see there's a lot of things you can bring there, household waste, scrap metal, all kinds of things. You just show up, one drop-off per customer, bring your picture ID and your bill, so there's not a pre-registration, but you bring those things to prove you can drop off. So always very popular. We have a new, some new things at the zoo, and you can see there, this is, I just want to point out, this is a flyer that has our logo. On all of our marketing, you'll see that it will continue to show Atascadero, California. So it's the Central Coast Zoo, Atascadero, California, and you can see that in our digital marketing, on our website, and all of our marketing pieces, and we are working on a comprehensive plan to make sure our permanent signage also shows Central Coast Zoo, Atascadero, California. This is a neat event with our friends. We're very grateful that our friends group, and these are the kind of things we get to do with Dr. Cynthia. This is free for members. If you are a member, you should be a member. These are the kind of cool things you're going to get to do as our friends group gets doing more of these neat things. But for $20 for non-members, this is the unique showing of Condor Canyon. It's a really great movie. We'll also have some animal encounters and some refreshments, and our very own Dr. Cynthia was very involved in her career in saving condors in her work earlier, and so she'll have a lot of neat insight on this, so you don't want to miss this unique. These are the kind of cultural things that we're doing at the zoo and educational opportunities, it's really cool. Okay, going from the zoo to police and outreach, coffee with the cop, please join our police department. This is a way to just hang out, get to know our police officers. They're amazing men and women, and this is October 23rd from 9:00 to 11:00 at Malibu Brew, and you will get to see how amazing they are, and all those questions you ever wanted to ask. If I'm going 46 in a 45, what happens, you know, all those questions, they'll be able to answer those for you. You may not like the answer, but they'll answer them for you. Okay, next, we have another zoo event here. We're going back and forth. Zoo Boo is coming soon, and you are seeing double because there are two dates this year. It was so successful last year while offering October 24th and 25th from 4:30 to 7:30. Tickets are on sale now. This is always a huge event for our family, so don't miss Zoo Boo. Next event is the Bobine Classic. This is always a big hit, a lot of energy downtown. This is America's fourth-hardest cow-themed gravel cycling ride. That means there's three others harder than ours. That's amazing that there's that many cow-themed gravel cycling rides, but hey, we have the fourth-hardest. There it is. So that's October 25th. You can register today. I know I'm getting long, so I have to throw some humor in. Back to the zoo, we have the Pumpkin Smash. This is hosted by the zoo. This is October 26th. I mean, how cute is that? That makes you want to join or give a couple thousand to the zoo right there, I think, as we're raising money for new exhibits. And October 26th, 10:30 to 12:30, you can see our animals. This is part of their enrichment, and it's a really fun seasonal thing. I've mentioned the friends a little bit. You're going to hear from them later tonight. They're just so impressive, and they're doing so many good things, and so on behalf of the staff, I wanted to make sure I share my thanks for your hard work and what you're doing. We can't wait to hear what you have to announce in a little bit. I'll save that for you. And finally, we have one last event, Dia de los Muertos. Oh, the zoo, of course, November 1st, 2025, from 10:00 to 1:00. So, so many neat things going on in the community, especially around our beloved Central Coast Zoo. So that's all I have. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor and members of council.
Does any member of the council have a question for the city manager? Yes, councilmember Funk?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, you were, you mentioned that there is signage updates happening at the zoo, and confirming, like, this is the activity book that has the full logo that has Atascadero. Am I correct in understanding that the sign that's up there right now that doesn't include this full name and logo is a temporary one, and that you're looking for some form of permanent signage that would feature roughly this logo?
That's correct. Those were temporary. We wanted to get them up as soon as we had the change to make sure people knew that was it, but Ms. Banish and her team are working on a comprehensive program, including a van wrap and some other things, so we're making sure we get it right.
Awesome. We are all proud of that, too.
Mr. Lewis, I, you mentioned the savings or the reduced interest rate we're paying on the bonds due to the good rating and good demand for Atascadero bonds. I don't recall if you, that you mentioned the actual dollar savings in terms of annual, but it's over $100,000 a year in lower payments on the balance sheet.
I could, but I want Ms. Rangel to elaborate on her good news.
Gotcha. Because I mean, I think to put that in terms for the public, that's very meaningful.
Yes, thank you for asking. That's a great question. The savings is actually about $117,000 every year, so that totals over, or about 3.5 million over the life of the bonds. It's a huge savings.
And thank, I think it's important for the public to know that's what good financial management brings, you know, to the community, is those kind of cost savings that we can put the money to use for other things. So thank you again for all your work. Sorry, got to get used to our new microphone system here. Now we are going to move on to community forum, and community forum is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. We ask you to state your name for the record, and comments during community forum cannot be a matter of discussion by the council. The Brown Act prohibits us from discussing items not on the agenda. However, we may at the end, at our discretion, ask a question of staff or ask staff to get together with a speaker. So with that, looks like we have quite a line, which is great. We ask you to, you know, line up speaks so you don't have to, you know, wait for people to come to the microphone. So we will begin with our first speaker. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor and council. As your city manager talked about, getting a lot of things done, the Friends of the Zoo wanted to join into that and kind of take this opportunity to let you know what we've been getting done, our donors, our members, our board. We've had a very active year and wanted to take this time to share with you some of the things that we've got done. As you know, the Friends of the Zoo is wholly, is our mission is to wholly support the zoo through funding, advocacy, and community engagement, and so I just want to share some of the things we did in '24, '25. So in fiscal year '24, '25, the Friends of the Zoo contributed about $187,000 to the zoo in purchased items, professional services, habitat improvements, educational support, and critical infrastructure, things that aren't sexy but critically needed, things like a topographic survey of the zoo. The operations building needs a ton of updating, and we committed to that. And in addition to the $187,000 that we actually spent, we committed another $300,000 plus on things, like I said, like the operations building, the lemur habitat renovation, and the tiger and Madagascar habitat expansion. Well, they're separate habitat, habitats expansions. So we'll talk about that. We also spent some time strengthening the organization, adopting new bylaws, getting, make sure we're in compliance with all of the federal regulations, expanding board recruitment, and establishment of clear policies. We've done that. This is one of the ones, as an old finance director that I'm excited about. We increased our membership by 52% year-over-year, going from $95,000 to $145,000, and we've increased our donations from $44,000 to $144,000. So that was all done with the year. We've also begun laying the groundwork for a major capital campaign, giant undertaking, to support the tiger expansion, and we've already done some lemur stuff, and we actively started applying for grants this year, and this is some exciting news. We found out today that we received our first grant. We applied for $75,000 for the lemur habitat, and we got a grant for $75,000 for the lemur habitat, so we're very excited with that. The other half million, we won't find out about until later in October or November, but we're hopeful. We've also increased our advocacy and communication, and speaking of communication, I see I have seven seconds left, so I'm going to pass this on to Angela. Angela is our current president.
Yes, and you know, while you didn't say your name, we all know that you're Rochelle Rickard, former city manager and current president of the Friends of the Zoo, so.
Hello, I'm Angela. We've also actively supported the zoo's name change to the Central Coast Zoo, aligning with our broader tourism initiatives and helping raise the zoo's profile as a regional destination. We will be becoming Central Coast Zoo Foundation, so we're super excited about that. We also voiced our support for the T-Bid assessment increase, recognizing its role in developing Atascadero's tourism assets, including the zoo, and we're proud to work alongside the zoo in achieving the AZA accredited accreditation in March. Since the close of the fiscal year, the Friends have continued to expand our commitment. We have pledged to fund professional animal training for the zoo staff and remain deeply engaged in preparations for the tiger and Madagascar campaign. To better reflect our commitment to the zoo's future, we are in the process of formally changing our name, as I said. The Central Coast Zoo is a treasured asset of the city of Atascadero, and we deeply appreciate your ongoing support and stewardship. We know that the city council has invested in a lot of the zoo, and we want to let you know that there are a lot of donors, volunteers, members that are right alongside you, investing time, energy, and money to support the zoo. So thank you for your continued support, and we will look forward to coming back with more celebrations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. Jeff Osland. First of all, the last council meeting, I had to leave early. I had a little flood at my house, and I wanted to make sure that our mayor understood why I left early, because he had a lot of concern. Secondly, to ask, to answer our city manager's question, what happens if you go 46 in a 45? We would be pretty petty in this town, pulling people over for one mile over the speed limit, but going through red lights and going 50 miles an hour over would probably get you a ticket. With that being said, Central Coast Zoo, Atascadero, if that's going to be moving on, that we're going to be using Atascadero and its name, then our flyers and such going forward need to be updated, please, and then we would be very thrilled with that. Secondly, to that wonderful stuff, let's see. I'm glad to see the zoo has a lot more events coming up. That's great. They're at least fun to go to if one can, so that's great. I am going to give kudos to our Public Works Director. I asked him to drive a couple of streets, and he did, and it's amazing how potholes were fixed 72 hours later after he hit them all, so I appreciate that very much in that he got the other folks replacing the cable under control because they were blocking school zones when school was getting out and creating havoc, so I'm very thrilled to see that those phone calls work. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Osland. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Jonna McGuire, and I teach at Paloma Creek High School. If you don't know Paloma Creek High School, it is down El Camino behind Danish Care Center. And at Paloma Creek High School, I teach social studies. I teach all the history classes. One of my classes, one of the five that I teach, is political science, and we truly do believe at Paloma Creek, we are not just presenting a laundry list of state standards, but we are creating citizens, and I really want to emphasize that in my class, that citizens, people that are involved in their community, are not a special royal group. They're just people that said yes. Last year, in the spring, unfortunately, we had an event down on that side of town that started my students talking about some safety concerns down there. So we wrote some letters. We sent in some concerns and some requests, mailed those in. We didn't hear anything, so we got on your fabulous website this fall, and we presented our concerns on the page that you have, and so now we're here to do the live presentation. So my students will be here to present some concerns we have, safety concerns, down at El Camino behind Danish Care Center.
Thank you. We're happy to hear from the students. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Aiden Alvarez, and I've came here to talk about wanting to install a crosswalk on El Camino. Preferably, it would be located on, El Camino, sorry, on one of this, sorry, Buena Fortuna bus stop near Paloma Creek High School, and with, we've had a continued growth on the south side of town with, you know, infrastructure being built, and I think it would just be safer for students and also the new people moving on in that part of the town. That would be it for me.
All right, thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Um, Addie and Andrea.
Andrea, can you go ahead and pull the microphone a little closer and, so we can hear you?
Okay. So first, we're going to do the concern, and that is, due to the number of students blocking biking and being dropped off or picked up in the area, traffic conjections and speeding vehicles pose a serious safety concerning, concern, especially during school arrival. And dismissal times, lowering the speed limit in the school zone would significantly improve the safety of students, staff, and families accessing the school. Slow speed limits near schools are proven an effective way to reduce accidents and improve response times in case of emergencies. We believe that establishing a clearly marked 25 mile per hour zone, school zone, with appropriate signage and enforcement would align with best practices for school safety and reflect the city's commitment to the protection of its youngest resident. So this is, this is a formal request for the inflammation of a 25 mile per hour speed limit zone on El Camino Real in the vicinity of Paloma Creek High School.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Isaac, and I have a concern in the Avenida Maria and El Camino Road. Significantly obstructs the view of people parking on the ramp and towards off to the bus stop and to the fire hydrants, and you can't really see trying to go into like a left lane or a right lane, trying to get in or get out. So my request is that we put a red line to the fire hydrant from the left side of the entrance. It's by like a hospital, like it used to be C.H.C. or something like that. And another red line from the bus stop to the other ramp. And just to prevent like traffic flow and stuff, and just to make it like safety, so people can get in and people can get out and not to get hit by other cars and everything. That is all for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And if you hang on a bit, we don't comment after each speaker, but at the end of Community Forum, I'll try to address some things. So, in other words, please don't leave until we're done with Community Forum, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Brett Boyle. I've lived on the Central Coast most of my life. I retired after working 25 years at Atascadero State Hospital. I've experienced many violent incidents over the years, and as a result, I wound up with post-traumatic stress disorder. Managing PTSD is a daily challenge, and I found that cannabis products, specifically those that I purchased from Megan's Organic Market in San Luis Obispo.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Boyle. We are going to be discussing at length cannabis.
My time is off, isn't it?
Two agenda items down the road here, so I'll need you to, you know, address, wait till then to address your comments, because that's on the agenda. And this is only for items not on the agenda. That's quite all right. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Don Clickard. I've been a resident of Atascadero since 1970. That was about when dirt was invented. Anyway, Chief, I wanted to just apologize once again for your having to intercept my conversation during council meeting the last time I was here. I apologize, and I assure you, it will never happen again. Okay. So, I have two things, but one of them was part of reference to the cannabis thing, so I will save that until later at your direction. But I did want to say certainly, good evening, Mayor Borbo, Council members Seth Peake, Mark Daras, Susan Funk, Heather Newsom, City Manager Jim Lewis, and the city staff. I want to thank the council and the staff for the recently completed downtown project. Downtown is now a beautiful place and very functional and an area that we can all be proud of. And Bob Wilkins, your first mayor, said at one point, "What we need in this town is a parking problem." And I went to the Brambles Pie Place the other day, and there was a parking problem, and I could not park on Entrada and had to go several blocks, and it really was good. I congratulate you all for a wonderful thing downtown, and it's really brought it to life. So, that, I think that the pathway that you provided for our students from the high school, from the middle school, and from the Fine Arts Academy, both coming to and from school and to each of those schools, has been really, really an important thing that you've done. But one of the main things there is the signal light that controls that crosswalk between those two schools. And that's for the benefit of the students, so nobody runs over them. But it's also for the benefit of the people who would always often have to wait for a very long time as they cross the road with their cell phones in their hands. And anyway, thank you for that. One more comment to the students behind me from Paloma Creek High School. I got to serve on the school board for quite a few years and after I completed my teaching thing at Atascaro High School. But I was chastised from time to time, not by the chief, but by other members of the board when I always said that Paloma Creek was my favorite school in the district. Because as a school board person, you shouldn't be picking favorites. But it wasn't a difficult task for me to do that because it was and is a place of really good teaching and really good learning. So, compliments to Paloma Creek High School and that staff. And I'll speak to the cannabis thing later on. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clickard, and thank you for your, I think it was 16 years of service on the school board and something like 100 or 200 years at the high school. So, yeah, so. All right. Also, I was going to say, thank you very much to the students for coming and speaking tonight. I know speaking in public, maybe for the first time, is a little bit daunting. And, you know, so we appreciate you having the courage to stand up and speak to us. What I'd like to do is have our Public Works Director, Mr. DeBarre here, get together with you and talk about some of the issues regarding the placement of crosswalks and curb painting and that sort of thing. Is that something you can do, Mr. DeBarre? I don't know.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And perhaps you could get contact information and get, and then arrange a time to get together with them and talk about that. That would be great. And I want to thank the zoo, Friends of the Zoo, for coming to speak this evening, and we appreciate the letter you provided to the members of the council, outlining in greater detail all of the things you've done and have been doing and will be doing for the zoo. It's a great partnership and has really increased its benefits to the zoo and the community in the last couple of years. So, thank you to the relatively new board for your great leadership in this area. We really appreciate it. So, and I think the community does too. So, and Mr. Osland, thank you as usual for your comments. We hope you don't have to run home for flooding issues. All right. Okay. With that, we will move on to a public hearing, item G1, regarding adopting wastewater capacity charges. And I will first, since this is a public hearing, I will first ask my colleagues if they had any ex parte communications they need to disclose.
I don't, I mean, Councilmember Peake and I serve on the citizens, the city manager's wastewater task force, but I don't think that's an ex parte.
Right, yeah. Conversations with staff, I don't think are ex parte.
We're just.
Got it. Okay. Seeing done, we'll move on, and we'll ask Mr. DeBarre to begin to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Borbo. So, the item tonight is a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed increase to sewer capacity charges. These are one-time charges that are fixed and apply to new connections to the city's sewer system. Or they also apply to existing customers that might upsize and have a higher need or change of views. They're really similar to development impact fees, really with the intention that, you know, our customers pay their share of the pro, past and future capacity upgrades that have occurred. They're all, like the sewer capacity, sewer service charges are based upon equivalent dwelling units. This is where one EDU, equivalent dwelling unit, is the average peak flow from a single-family home. And the average, it's also got a strength factor, the average strength factor from a single-family home. So, it's all, that's a basis of one EDU. So, this is the calculation for how we come up with the sewer capacity charges. Based, we had a wastewater rate study that was performed earlier this year that evaluated the sewer capacity charge calculations. It's, they use both existing fixed assets plus future CIP cost when this is calced out. The sum of the replacement charge and growth-related value charge per EDU is, as you see on the table here, so the top portion is the existing cost to pay into the existing, what's the city's already paid for. And then, the bottom, growth-related, is that prorated share of the future CIP work that needs to be done to accommodate future capacity and future connections. So, currently, the current sewer capacity charge is $6,769 per EDU. It's proposed to increase to $8,856 per EDU. This, if adopted tonight, this will go into effect 60 days from tonight and on December 14th. And then, this sewer capacity charge is also adjusted each year for cost of inflation. And that's based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. And that bases it year-over-year on the April edition for that CCI value. And then, just, we like comparing how we, you know, size up against our competing neighbor cities. But this is a most recent analysis of what other wastewater agencies are collecting on their capacity charges. But you can see right now, we're kind of the third to the lowest of the local agencies. If this was adopted tonight, it would put us a little higher up, but still well below some of those other agencies that have mostly had recent wastewater, large wastewater projects performed. So, the recommendation tonight, after the public hearing, is to adopt the draft resolution attached in your packet, setting sewer capacity charges for the wastewater division. With that, I can answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeBarre. Questions from council. Start on my left, Mr. Peake. So, it's Councilmember Peake.
Yeah. How do we come up with, I know that, just so we can clarify with the public with the EDU, since we don't have a city-run water company, things like gymnasium versus laundromat, the gymnasium is one EDU higher than a laundromat. What is a gymnasium? Is it, there just showers involved? Some of them are kind of, have always been kind of wonky to me, like how we come up with that. But since we don't have the water data, since we have a mutual water company, how do we come up with some of those calculations?
Sure. That's a, that's a great question, and I'm just going to back up to this. This was, there was a volumetric analysis done in the early 1990s that kind of established this classification schedule. And they, what they did was they looked at all these uses and kind of the water consumption records, and then the strength, average strength from these uses. For instance, a restaurant has a much higher, what's called a BOD factor, biological oxygen demand, and total suspended solids, so from a single-family home. So, that, that would be a higher, but, you know, even if they use the same amount of water, it could be a higher EDU. But these are all based on a single-family home, which is a peak flow of 240 gallons per day. That's, that's actually a 1.5 peaking factor. So, average water consumption from a single-family home is 320 gallons per day. You take about half of that, that might go to the sewer, that's 160, and then multiply that by 1.5, is a 240. And then, everything's based upon that relative. I might, I'm happy to announce that we are putting out an RFP tomorrow for a new user classification schedule. That's going to take into new volumetric analysis, and we'll get water consumption data from the water company to base that on.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important for the public to be more clear on that because when you're opening a gym and it's a $20,000 increase to their connection, a new gym versus a car wash, which is an arbitrary amount of washes, being 16,000 and also two and a half EDUs less than a gym, it seems to the public, be thousands of more gallons of water coming out of a car wash than there would be a gym, even if someone showered every 20 minutes, right? Just important things, I think, for the public to kind of wrap their minds around because it can be unclear.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend Daras.
Thank you, Director DeBarre. Also, I kind of wanted, there was a couple of numbers that I wanted to question as well. Okay, so on the residential, we have single-family apartment, mobile home, and senior. Are ADUs just simply considered a single-family residence? Because they're typically going to be a lot smaller. So, wouldn't the usage, the amount of consumption, or, you know, be quite different?
Yeah, so like, as this table shows, like an apartment or condo would be 0.75 EDU's. And then, senior apartment would actually be 0.35 because they use much, much less, and it's often, you know, perhaps a studio or whatever. And this is like one of the reasons we want to do a new user schedule study is because we need to expand this table. We need to account for the varying uses. Actually, there's been a lot of change in water consumption as well. You know, we have low-flush toilets and water consumption devices in homes, and it's much more efficient now than it was 30 years ago.
Well, the one that really caught me, though, was, was the office unit being the same as a single-family residence. I mean, in an office, you will likely have a toilet for a, for a single unit. So, how one toilet is going to use, have the same capacity as a house with a shower, dishwasher, kitchen sink, et cetera. I mean, that, that seems a little lopsided. But, but you said this is all going to be updated coming up shortly?
Yes, it will.
Okay. So, I'll be looking forward to that. Thanks.
Okay. I'll pass it down in a moment, but my questions are in, in response to Councilmember Peake's question, did I hear you say we will get consumption data, water usage data from the water company?
Yes, we will, for our volumetric analysis.
For the analysis, but not for ongoing, you know, annual billings?
That's my understanding. We, the water company has not offered actual consumption data to the city for individual billing.
Okay. Thank you. Because I think it's important to point out to the public, in most communities, your sewer bill is based on how much water you use in the winter, when you're presumed not to be using it for irrigation. And that's because if the city provides the water, we obviously know how much water each individual household uses. But since we don't control the water company, and they have concerns about providing that data, that's why we have to use this methodology.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I didn't really hear an answer to Mayor Pretend Daras's question regarding ADUs. I don't see them as a separate category here. I thought they were. Or are you saying they're the equivalent of an apartment or something?
I'm sorry. I thought you said EDU.
No, he said, yeah, he was asking about ADUs.
Okay. So, a lot of the uses, especially with ADUs and junior ADUs, they're based on square footage. And so, a lot of uses, even commercial units and whatever, I mean, based on how big they are, how many bathrooms. We'll look at, the schedule allows the city engineer to kind of evaluate those and make some adjustments. So, when a lot of this ADU trades, I guess, for lack of a better term, had started a number of years ago, we came up with some of those valuations and it's based upon square footage, so.
So, I mean, so for the public, I mean, an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, like a guest house or a second house on your property. A junior ADU being one, if you add it on to your house with a separate entrance that could be separately occupied. But so, you're saying they don't fall under any one of these particular categories, but you're going to assign them a value based on square footage?
Yes. That's how it is done. So, an ADU that's 1,500 square feet or more is a one EDU.
Okay. I don't think we have ADUs that big, do we? But we limited them to 1,200.
And they, from there, I think there's another category, like if they're under 1,200, or maybe it's 1,200 square feet. I don't have the info in front of me. But then, you know, it goes down from that point. So, if they're 500 square feet or less, I believe they're 0.3 EDU's.
Okay. Okay. I think that should be clarified in these tables in the future. But, and my last question is grocery store greater than 10,000 feet, set fee? I don't see grocery stores less than 10,000 feet as a category. I don't know if maybe we don't have, we must have, because like Gather or whatever. I don't know where, of course, Real It fits in there, but I don't see a category for them, wherever that land.
Yeah. That's one of the, one of the things we want to adjust and correct is, you know, not to have it just over 10,000 square feet, actually break it down. Or gymnasiums, that's another one, you know. You have, let's say, Kennedy Fitness in Town, which is our biggest gym. And then, you have, you know, other gyms that are much smaller and have less showers and don't have pools and other things that we need to make those corrections.
Yeah, there can be a very wide variation. And just as a, as a note, do our car washes recycle water? And perhaps that why they're less water users?
No. They, they usually have a fuel trap that they, they take some sediment and also take out sediment, but they usually discharge in the sewer.
They do. Okay. All right. Thank you. And I would move down, except I think, Councilmember Peake, did you have a follow-up question? Okay. Got it. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you. Wanted to check and see, in terms of the basis of the numbers that go into this, does this include the collection system, you know, all the pipes and the lift stations that get the sewage to the plant? Or does it just include, as well as the plant itself, or does it just include the plant?
No, it includes a collection system and the plant.
So.
Councilmember, are you speaking to the increase? What does it cover?
Yeah. The, the increase, so the capacity charges would be both, but the increase that we're being asked to do this round, is that, we, let me back up. Earlier this year, on the basis of the study, we alerted folks, on the basis of two different studies. One about the wastewater treatment plant and one about the collection system. We alerted folks who are on the sewer system already that we were facing, what was at that time, an estimated cost of 100 million for the new treatment plant and $73 million in fairly short-term costs for the collection system. Are both of those values incorporated into this? Or is there eventually another shoe to fall if we get more, as we get more information?
So, the entire cost of the secondary treatment improvements at 100 and, 120,000 dollars. This, this is a CIP table that was used for the rate study earlier this year. And these are inflated dollars, but you can see on the bottom there the treatment plant expansion and those costs. And then, the collection system is above it. The collection system was pared down quite a bit from what the collection system master plan recommended. And so, we will be part of this I&amp;I study and other things that we're looking at. We will come up with a priority list, and we plan on doing a. We will come up with a priority list and we plan on doing another rate study in early, well, in about a year, we'll start that after we do the user classification study and the volumetric analysis and get those new schedules in place. And then that will be fed into, along with preliminary costs for the new treatment plant and the I N I study. Those will feed into a new wastewater rate study that we can identify what those sewer service charges and these new capacity charges could be.
Let me be a little tighter on the
Sure.
Councilmember, these only include funds, the new and the increase only covers improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, the expansion. I think it's very important to understand. So when we looked at this last spring, we recognized that we were so far behind in our rate increase that we needed to start making a number of increases. We also recognized that our methodology was flawed as we're, it's the best we have, but it needs to do better. And so we decided to bump up rates where we could, establish a task force to actually further study this in great detail, which you've been a member of, and and we'll share it, I'll get to that in a second. And then look at connection fees, but I didn't want to bring this to you until the wastewater task force had met for a bit, to at least have understanding of what connection fees do and how they work. And so before you is a very small adjustment. This is not the overall adjustment we'll need. This does not address lift station expansion, main expansion, forced main expansion. This is simply a small incremental step towards a contribution to the 100 million dollar wastewater plan. So to answer your question very clearly, this does not address big lift station improvements, main improvements. We need to do more. To the mayor's point, I wanted to share that you'll get a report. I was kind of arguing myself for whether to put this on the agenda for tonight or wait till you heard the wastewater task force report, because there's so much information the rest of the council's not up to speed on, because you and Councilman Peak have been on that and done a great job. But the task force made it clear that they want not just the volumetric analysis, but they want to look at a variety of ways that these fees are calculated. So to your questions that you're asking, hey, this doesn't seem right and why is this? The task force completely agrees with you. We went to the water company and actually asked, what they're willing to give us is information by category, but not by you individually, your account. So that's what, so they'll say, okay, restaurants in general use this, grocery stores in general use this. So it's a step towards tying a rate to use, but it isn't, or many cities who control both sides of the billing say you use this, you pay this. And so we made it clear that we're interested in that. The committee wants to explore that further, but there was no commitment yet. That work will start after you receive the report and give me direction in November on the work that the, and consequently, at that meeting, we'll also have queued up the contract for the volumetric analysis and some of these other things that I can hear you want to dig into. The committee wanted to as well. So that's kind of where we're headed. I can appreciate the council's kind of why this, what? The task force understands that, staff understands that, and we're looking forward to, as we look to adjust rates in the future, which we will need to do. We're we're quite behind. We want to make sure it's done transparently and there's buy in from the community in how we do that.
So to that end, just a couple of things. Is it fair to say then that that the purpose of of making sure that we have capacity charges that at least reflect what we know, we know now on additional costs that are needed to be able to expand capacity to handle new services and new customers? And that this is necessary to get, to make sure it's fair, that new, that new customers pay their fair share of the new costs of the of the capacity that serves them? Is that right?
That's what we're trying to get, yes.
Okay. And so this won't be the last time we look at this, of course. I mean, that we'll come back to this as you get, as better information comes in this process, because we'll have a better, clear understanding of what that wastewater system will be, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so then there'll be another hole looking at at the rates for ongoing customers and in that. And then I just want to ask, in terms of the the, we talked about some pretty large numbers, just general floating around for costs involved in in a new wastewater treatment plant. I want to confirm that is the only reason for that, that we lacked capacity for growth? Or do new requirements from the state play a factor so that existing customers would need to have new plant capabilities in order to maintain the existing services that they have as well as new customers?
Right. So I think that's a very important point to make. So the answer is no. It is not just growth. So actually, while the plant is at capacity and as we look at rates for the future, both on the maintenance side and the connection side, the task force wanted to make it very clear that new development pays its full fair share, which is why we need to look at these. But that isn't the only reason. So clearly, if we're going to expand the plant, that cost of that expansion should be borne by new connections to the plant. However, even if we weren't expanding the plant, we no longer meet the state requirements for how we treat our biological waste, the solids and other things. So there's a wholesale technology going from basically gravity and dirt flow to a mechanical system that treats at modern standards. And so we have to do that anyways, which is why the maintenance side of the equation, the annual bill, will also have a significant portion of the new plant attached to it, because every existing customer would need to pay for that portion of it.
And we'll be having an extensive discussion on that in November, correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Got it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Newsom? All right, thank you. Okay, I'd like to take this, put this out for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to comment on this item, please approach the podium. Mr. Osland, welcome.
Good evening, counsel. Once again, Jeff Osland, resident and concerned resident. Could you put that slide back up that had the matrix of what we call a gymnasium and a single family home, et cetera, please? It's still not there. But I'll keep talking as you find it, because I want to congratulate everybody. You confused me tonight and that's not easy to do. So first of all, if you look at single family, it says dwelling unit, it says current would say 67,000, proposed is 88. Is that a dollar amount?
Yes, and that's 100, not 1,000.
Okay, so, all right, so we're, we're basically bringing up a single family sewage rate, $1,000 a year, by the way, I see it up there. Because it says 6769 versus 80, I don't have my glasses, I think it's 8856. That's a steep amount. That's number one. Number two is, I think in classifications, where you put gymnasium, you might want to put slash fitness center, because I think a gymnasium is for tots on a beam. So I know those classifications have to change, but that's concerning that those rates would be going up that high. When we talked about this a few years ago, I was opposed to the connection fee for existing homes, that there should be something in there, that if the sewage ends up down the street, because I own my home and I have to pay $20,000 to connect now, is unfair because my home's been on septic forever, where new builds should be more expensive in a new area. I still have deep feelings on that. By state law and regulation, most car washes, especially new ones, do have reclaimed water on site. You can't just dump all your old water, I believe. Pretty sure about that one. And then when it comes to restaurants, that is an antiquated chart, because you're charging based on seats. Well, I can tell you, we have a couple of restaurants that may not have a lot of seats, but they have a heck of a lot of traffic through delivery or drive through or whatever. So some things are not as favorable to some of the restaurant owners and some are very favorable. So I think we have to look at this and I would suggest that you table this to a later date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for comments. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, return it to the council for motion and any discussion. Councilmember Funk?
I wanted to follow up a couple of questions. One is, is I was listening to Mr. Osland's comment that these were charges per year. Wanted to clarify with staff that this is a one time charge that's placed when a new customer, a new connection comes into the sewer system. Is that correct?
That's correct. For new development, you pay this once.
Okay. And then could you clarify, if we were to table this, would this complicate the discussions currently underway to make sure that Atascadero State Hospital pays its fair share of the plant if if and when they join forces with our wastewater treatment plants? So that we didn't, right now, we've got, right now, am I correct that we have two, Atascadero State Hospital has its own plant and we have ours and they're like neighbors? And these might come together? And if we wait, would that complicate those discussions?
I'd prefer not comment on those discussions at this point, but I think to your point, we do have other big development projects out there and the wastewater task force has made it very clear that new development should pay its fair share. We know these rates are way behind. So in tabling this, you would not be taking the advice of your citizen committee that's saying, hey, new development needs to pay its fair share as development comes through. This is already way behind, but we feel it's at least a step forward that we can verify and justify with data. So to table it, I think accomplishes nothing but putting more burden on the rate payer.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, twice you've used the term behind, or you and Mr. DeVar have, is that really just to say that we've effectively speaking been undercharging for, on these connection fees for some period of time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a critical point. Okay, there's not any further discussion, I'm ready for questions, I'm ready for a motion from someone on the council.
I I would add a comment that we know that these, this whole thing with, you know, with this study from 1990 with the very classification has really stretched the end of its usefulness in in terms of how it fits us now. And that's why I'm very pleased that staff is moving ahead as the task force really encouraged them to do, to do a new, a new study about what are the categories we should be looking at, as well as what are the usages per category, so that we can clean up some of the inequities that are present in in this system. It's never going to be perfect, but at least with a capacity charge, we we have the ability to tell somebody who's looking at developing a project, what is it going to cost me to connect to the sewer system? And there is a number that's associated with that. And then once that study gets up, we'll get a better number. But there, but I wanted to echo what City Manager Lewis said, this really doesn't help us if we, if we delay, because it, if we delay, it, we're effectively asking existing customers to subsidize new development to an extent that we know is significant. And we ought to at least fix that part of the equity for, do what we can to address that now, and then we'll be able to get better rates within the course of, within less than the next year, probably, I assume. So.
Are you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Funk, second with Councilmember Peak. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Daras?
Yes.
Mayor Brobo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to item H1, which I believe is probably what most of the audience is here for this evening. It is a discussion of cannabis land use. And I believe we will turn this, we will receive an overview of the cannabis zoning code and update on the industry and we will end up providing staff direction on where we would like to proceed on this. I will turn it over, I believe, to Mr. Dunsmore, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Sure happy to use a new audio system. Sounds amazing from my end. Wait for the presentation to come up here momentarily, but really happy to present to you a large quantity of data that we've collected over the last couple of months. And so my apologies upfront, because the staff report has a lot of information just thrown at you. And normally, I like to have a very streamlined report that kind of goes through systematically, but this one really just plays off all the topics that are associated with adding a retail cannabis to Atascadero, if that's an option. And again, tonight, this is really a first look at this data and a question for council as to whether you want staff to proceed. I'm going to buy a little more time while our IT team gets the presentation up there. So we first brought this back forward in February of this year during the goal setting process that City Council had. And it seems like for every two years over the last eight years, we've talked about this topic and we've slowly built on our code to what we have today. So we already have a fairly developed cannabis code in the city of Atascadero right now. It has a series of land uses that we do allow. A lot of that we had to do in response to state law changes, which prompted the personal use and all of those other things associated with Proposition 64 back in 2016. And then it was in 2017, 2018 that we actually brought forward our first significant ordinance that really responded to Prop 64. And we also got the help of a consultant to bring forward a tax at that particular time. And then in 2021, we amended that ordinance to refine it, refine some of the definitions. And so as it stands today, we have an ordinance that has all of these standards in it. It allows simply for delivery services and a testing lab. To this date, none of those land uses have arrived in the city, but there are delivery services that originate outside of the city. And that's entitled mine, it's in our zoning regulations, known as chapter 17. I got ahead of myself a little bit since I didn't have the presentation up, and so I've kind of already talked about a couple of those items. The tax is kind of interesting. It's a bit of a sliding scale. It's at 4% today, but the council could actually adjust it up to 6% simply by resolution ordinance. And I think that's even without having to go out for a vote of the people. Right now, we are receiving a little bit of tax revenue from these out of town delivery services, and I think that's roughly 32,000 a year. And what's really interesting in your report, I did attach a very recent state report that just came out, and I pulled a lot of statistics from that. And that report was on the condition and health of the cannabis industry in California. It's really interesting to see that. It's kind of similar to what's happening in a lot of other industries, they're leveling off. But in in cannabis, it's not so much leveling off of the consumption, it's a decline in the product prices. And I think that's because of the competition and different retailers and different industries trying to get their foothold. But there is folks, we have talked to all of the retailers in our county, and they all are reporting strong sales to our North County region from stores that exist in Morro Bay, in Grover Beach, in San Luis Obispo. Unfortunately, as you find in this report from the Department of Cannabis Control from the state of California, there's still a very significant black market, which accounts for the majority of the market. And apparently, that is basically the result of generally high taxes, high fees, and some of these regulatory challenges for the actual legal businesses. So it's forcing some of that back into the black market. The state sales tax now at 15%. For a short time period, it went up to 19% and then they rolled it back again, realizing that they'd probably hit their limit. So here's a little look at a graph of revenues statewide. You can see it's dropped off a bit, hit its peak in 2020 or 2021. That's a kind of a post COVID peak that alcohol saw at the same time, and then now it's leveled off. Wine industry is doing the same thing, beer industry is doing the same thing. It's kind of interesting to see where these things are going. So tax revenue, pretty similar. You can see it peaked pretty high, 21 and 22. And what we're looking at is tax revenue of our region, and this is San Luis Obispo, Grover Beach and Morro Bay. And in these areas, of course, revenue, the tax rates vary a little bit. So if I was to do a best guess, and I actually have talked to consultants about this, what could Atascadero expect? Possibly up to 500 K a year? And this is only speculation, we really don't have scientific data on that. We just know what the other communities are bringing in, which is between 500 and a million. And we know that North County has a share of the market, being And we know that North County has a share of the market being sold in these other communities. Now, I did address a few other topics in the report that are critical whenever you're going to evaluate adding a land use like this. And a very important one is crime and security plans. And our police chief, Dan, we've talked about this quite a bit. And, you know, one of my main questions is, are we having issues in Atascadero associated with cannabis? We don't have specific data on that. Now, what the other retailers have told us in these other communities is that they do have extensive security plans. And the security plans are effective in overseeing these businesses. They have cameras. They have secured windows. They have an alarm system. They have full-time security guards. They have locked vaults. And they have an area where a vehicle pulls in to make deliveries and do other transactions that's in a concealed area. So these outlets actually have to have a vehicle pull inside of the building or inside of a port of cashier or inside of a carport where there's concealed things going on. So in these communities where this is happening, there hasn't been any significant changes in criminal activity reported. Another topic I put into the report was just how these businesses look in terms of signs and advertising. Most communities regulate the signage and building appearance similar to how they would any other retail land use. Our municipal code already has sign regulations in it. Now, as a land use and as a discretionary land use category, which these fall into typically, you can also add any kind of particular item you would want to. Most importantly is that state law already dictates that these things cannot appeal to children. And the city can establish project-specific limitations through use permit. And you can limit illumination size and content. All of those things can be done. Now, location requirements, how do cities handle this? Some cities, most cities actually have limits based on what they want. They, two retailers, three retailers, four retailers, but how do they do that? Some communities use what I'll call a beauty contest, or they have a merit system. Now, that can be problematic because the merit system is simply a ranking that's evaluated by city staff. And so that has room to be challenged, and that is, you know, sort of a contest. And there has been legal challenges based on that kind of a system. Another way to regulate land use in this endeavor is to actually just create what we call an overlay zone, a specific zone where such a land use would be allowed. And within that zone, you have distance limitations. So what you're looking at there on that map is simply, you know, how that could look. I'll have another exhibit that shows it even better. But what this map illustrates, that green area illustrates one of our commercial zones along El Comune Real. It doesn't matter which commercial zone, because we can choose whatever commercial zone we'd like to allow this land use. But let's assume that's a retail commercial zone. The red you see on the map is what the state law puts in place, which is a 600-foot distance from schools, daycares, parks, and youth centers. Now, you could take this a step further with an overlay zone. And if you created overlay zones within a commercial zone to say, we're going to allow a cannabis land use within this overlay zone. But within that overlay zone, we're going to require that each cannabis store be separated by a particular distance. In this example, I've just thrown out 1,500 feet. So what that does, it automatically limits the number of stores within that particular overlay zone to one, because you just don't have that much space in that zone. So that's just one methodology, just for an example, just to throw out there, how the city could limit land uses. So we've learned a lot from the other jurisdictions. We've talked to folks in the police departments from these three communities. We've talked to their community development staff. We've talked to the retail stores in these communities. Sam Mountain, our assistant planner, I'm going to point him out. He's in the audience here tonight, and he's done a lot of that groundwork for us. I sent him out to all these communities and to talking to all these cities and helped me gather all this data for this report tonight. So that's why he's here. But anyway, what we heard was there's not significant crime or code enforcement issues. There's not a lot of that going on, but there is staffing impacts. San Luis Obispo hired an entire team to regulate this endeavor. They hired folks on their police department, and they hired a cannabis czar. Did they need that? I'm not sure. But that's what they did to respond to this. What we did see is that there's not any issues with hours of operation. They generally limit these things to 9:00 PM. The retailers that have opened up seem to be doing well. None of them have shut down. And it's the use permit process that really ties down the specific regulations for each of these stores. And then, of course, I mentioned earlier, the merit criteria. Some of these cities have used that to select a high-quality business, but that has been open to legal challenge. So focusing on our code specifically, what would we have to do should the council want to go this direction? We'd have to add a definition of retail sales. We'd have to add that retail land use and remove the retail prohibition text that's currently in our code. We'd have to determine where these would be. And then you could add any other performance standards you want. Now, we already have this code. So basically, in very simple terms, it's just adding a land use to the land use table and adding any other criteria you see fit. The most difficult thing is the location criteria and number, should we choose to go that way. So generally, I wanted to present facts tonight. I am looking to you for your decision as to how we proceed. But if you do vote to proceed, I essentially would look at these five steps. And the next step being doing additional outreach. We did a little bit of outreach for this today. We did a legal ad, plus we put an ad in New Times. Plus, we did some stuff on our website and social media. And then, of course, by talking to all these other communities, we've gotten the word out as well. But essentially, we would do another outreach strategy. We would develop sort of a draft code. We'd bring that draft code back to you for some, you know, preliminary look. And then we'd go about our normal code update, which means going to the planning commission and coming back to City Council for adoption. This would take us a few months to get to that spot. Be next year, somewhere around April 20th, we were figuring. Just throwing, just teasing about that one. That came up in our discussion, if we could actually have a date. Apparently, there's a 420 connotation tied to cannabis. I don't know where that comes from. But anyway, the discussion items would be essentially the location limitations, overlay zones, a selection process, community benefit programs, which are already part of our code. That's an important factor. Each of these are supposed to mitigate their impact to a community by putting in place a community benefit program that funds a specific activity in your community that contributes to a positive endeavor. And we also have to consider the staffing impacts. And I think our police chief would like to weigh in on that factor as well. I'm not going to pick on him to speak, but if you do have questions for him, he's well-versed to this. But I'll leave it to questions and discussion at this time. I do have additional maps and images if you have questions. But otherwise, I'm here to answer your questions as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunsmore. I'll begin on my left with Councilmember Peak for questions.
Yeah, the $500,000 projected tax revenue. I'm looking at like the numbers from, you know, Morro Bay. They're estimating about 10% Atascadero residents shop there. In Slow, about 15% Atascadero residents shop there. That doesn't show Paso Robles, Templeton, County Incorporated residents numbers. So the, I mean, just total rough number, that's $200,000 tax revenue in those two locations. So the $300,000, you know, being, the idea of like coming into a new market, is I would assume it would be a local purveyor that wants to be in this market. You have to figure out where the market share is going to come from. So it's either conversion from black market sales to legal sales or to create more customers that don't normally purchase it. So I think that's just a number that's kind of a, I mean, I understand it's a shot in the dark that wherever you got it from. It's not, it's not a written in stone. But if we were to take the people that are going over the hill or to the coast to purchase legal cannabis in a retail location and just say that's the exact number of people, that's roughly 200,000 for Atascadero residents based on the projected year-end for this year. So I'm just kind of curious, where the 500,000, where the extra 300,000 comes from? Do they anticipate people starting to buy it legally? Or people coming from Paso, from Templeton, from different areas into the area for the sole purpose of buying cannabis? I mean, not sole purpose. I'm sure they'll grab a sandwich or whatever, but buy some gasoline. Where's that number, where did that number come from, from your consultant?
Two places. So first of all, in 2020, HDL, which is our financial consultant, did an analysis on this topic specifically. And they came up with in 2020, five years ago, a range between 250 to 500,000 annually in revenue. But additionally, I think that the sales that are happening in San Luis Obispo at the retailers, retailers there are a much higher percentage than you mentioned in the North County. And they don't include just Atascadero. When I got those numbers, they included all of North County. And given the fact that Atascadero would be the only one in North County, it would be substantially higher. But now, the city of Paso Robles is joining this discussion and may eventually have a retailer as well. So it definitely would reduce that potential down, back down again. So again, the evidence I provided to you, that up to 5,000, 500,000, is really not very factual. It's a best guess. It might be a lot lower, could be a little bit higher. But we're assuming that there is going to be a share of sales that are happening in Morro Bay right now from North County residents. There's a share of sales happening in Grover Beach right now from North County residents, and there's a share in San Luis Obispo. And so if you add all those up, just based on those shares right now, it's well over 500,000. But we'd assume that some people are going to still shop there because they might work there or they might, you know, go down there more often. But again, there's also other parameters for the fact that we're a pass-through community from the Central Valley, and we're right along the 101. And our, when I spoke to our financial consultant a couple of days ago about renewing this analysis, they mentioned all of those things as well. I haven't set them forth on a new analysis, but if council just voted tonight to ask us to move forward, this is one piece of the equation we would ask for. We would have the consultant run some new numbers.
So when we acquire a customer, my business is generally the survey of why did you, why'd you buy from us? Why are you here? Why aren't you buying from someone else? What made you want to shop with or contract with me, with us? Is there any data that's been given to you from retailers saying why they prefer to drive 25 minutes versus ordering a delivery to their house in Atascadero? Does that, does that make, does that question make sense?
It does. And I, we haven't asked that question, and we, we don't know that information.
Because I would think a normal, you know, someone who either medically requires it or wants to use it would have flavor of the, you know, their favorite thing to buy, you know? The people that I know that, that use it, they, it's the same product every single time. So I'm just kind of curious why people wouldn't use a delivery service versus driving over the hill in such a larger amount of occurrences.
Don't know. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Daras?
Thank you. On the staffing issue that you'd mentioned, you said San Luis Obispo hired an entire team, whatever that team makeup is. Have you considered or run numbers on what, what it would cost us in staff? What kind of staff would, is Atascadero predicting that it's going to need in order to have cannabis shops in town? And how that, how that costs out? And is, is 500,000 going to cover that? 300,000 going to cover that? What, how's it balance out?
We do not assume that community development would need additional staff to cover this. We do assume there would be significant additional hours spent processing one or more use permits and evaluating and monitoring those land uses. Now, I think the police department may need additional staffing, and I don't think I've evaluated that in detail. And I think we should hear from the police chief on that, because there may be, whenever you have businesses that have substantial security plans and security cameras and require that monitoring, there is additional staff at the city. It's not in community development. It might be in the police department. And there might be some staffing impacts of finance as well as we collect revenues. So these are all the things to think about. Do, we don't have specific numbers. And again, this is something that our financial consultant can help us with. And as we look at these other communities and see what they've done. Now, what's happened in San Luis Obispo is they started out with several staff, and then they realized that they didn't need all those staff. And so they don't have extra staffing anymore. I think they have one person that's in charge of managing everything, every component, like security and the revenue and oversight. But they're probably also programmed to doing every, you know, all, all the other things. So I don't have a perfect answer for you on that question. I think it's a really good question. I think it's something we need additional information on. But there's staffing impacts, but it doesn't mean hiring multiple bodies or even one body, at least in my team.
Well, and you know, what I'm thinking about is, you know, if we had, you know, if it was 500,000 and by the time you have any additional costs that go into that, from what I, from what I was told, a $500,000 increase to our tax revenue is about a little over 1%. So then, by the time you cut into that for other expenses, then it comes down to less than a percent. And it gets smaller and smaller, and it just becomes, okay, so we've created something that's a convenience for people in the North County in Atascadero. But is it really a benefit to Atascadero? I mean, we're talking about the money being the benefit. And I see no other, other benefit other than, you know, I'll bring in more tax money. I mean, economic development is very important. I understand that. But, and I see the light come on over here for City Managers. I'll let him go ahead and.
I would share, we would have to do a more thorough analysis. But I think it's probably at least one and a half FTE. And so I think you have to look at, one of my concerns from a staffing perspective is when you look at on page 109 of your report, operating fees and taxes by city, we've already heard that Paso Robles may consider doing this. And so it's a matter of how many stores do we have? You know, do we support one? Do we support two? I don't think we support five. And you see Grover Beach has four, and so they can spread. You have the tax generator from the store, and then you have the annual fee the store pays to the city for it to operate. But I think if you're talking one and a half FTE, one of those is a safety personnel here from the chief, you could be six figures in increased operating costs. You likely are. The HDL contract to collect and audit the dollars. And so are we going to be able to charge a store $125,000 a year to operate? Are they going to pay that? Those are the things I want to understand better, because you're right. If, if we generated a half million, and that was when there were less outlets and there weren't adjacent stores, that is just about one and a half percent of our general fund. And if we're spending $250,000 of that or $200,000 to support the staff efforts, it's a policy question the council needs to consider. So, but I am concerned that we can charge enough in annual fees that the marketplace would bear that to cover staff costs. That's something we would definitely dive into if you told us to go forward, but it's a fair concern. Chief, did you want to speak to your staffing needs?
I did. Thank you. So I think it's important to understand why we predict that there would be more administrative tasks. Under the Business and Professions Code, they actually have some regulations that these businesses have to abide by. And those tasks require inspections and coordination with, with the city. A lot of these inspections are going to fall directly on the police department, such as background checks and screening, making sure that the facilities themselves meet the regulations for security. So these are things that will fall on the police department. Now, these things can be outsourced. And the reason why I bring that up is because that is the difference that we're seeing in some of these other cities who have taken this on. Some have decided to take on the FTE. Some has decided to outsource. And even those, that was San Luis Obispo. San Luis Obispo has now started outsourcing a lot of these tasks. However, not all the tasks can be outsourced. So there was still some administrative burden that's going to be on the city and the staff, not just with the PD, but with, with others as well. So that would be a concern as well, is what is the, the, you know, if we're asked to move forward, that we, a calculation that we'd have to do is exactly what those tasks would be and what we would need to do to compensate for them.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't want to, certainly, we want to have something like this go forward and then wind up costing the city. There was something you touched on, and now I lost my train of thought on it. I'll get back to it. Thanks. Thanks. Thank you, chief.
Okay, before I pass it down to Councilmember Funk in this, and I wanted to ask a couple of follow-up questions to what previous two have asked. City manager, you, you indicated, you talked about annual fee. Also, some cities, as indicated in the staff report, charge, charge up to $80,000 to establish and open a shop in terms of a permit. I mean, and a substantial annual fee to offset. So you can set the cost of either, you know, obtaining a permit because you have the initial background checks, police department has to approve the security plan, et cetera. You can establish a substantial fee to open and establish a dispensary, right? That's correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, with the idea of offsetting this cost so that the revenue is, becomes more pure revenue because you're mitigating the cost also through the annual fee, to the extent that you have to do annual inspections or, you know, review background checks on new employees, that sort of thing. Those kind of ongoing costs that relate to keeping one of these, you know, places in business in our community, you can charge for that as well, so that you're further offsetting the cost, right?
That would be the goal.
I mean, the goal would be that essentially you're having the business pay its way in terms of any additional burden. So, Mr. Dunsmore, I understand that, because I spoke with Grover Beach, I understand that they initially hired a detective sergeant, you know, to, you know, be the liaison, et cetera, track things, do things from a police perspective, but kind of also be an overall want of contact for the industry. And that that is, you know, is, is not, doesn't require, you know, there no longer requires the full-time services of that kind of individual. And you talked about San Luis Obispo started, but they've realized that the burden is not nearly as substantial as they thought it was, what you indicated, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then one thing I don't understand in relation to Councilmember Peak's questions regarding revenue projections, I'm presuming that the people in Atascadero, their, you know, use of cannabis is not any, is not significantly different than that of people in Morro Bay or San Luis Obispo, although perhaps San Luis Obispo being a college town, maybe that's a little different. But, but that our folks are not inclined to consume any more or any less cannabis products than Morro Bay residents. We have a substantially greater population in Morro Bay as well as, you know, and they might pick up people on the coast, up in Cambria, et cetera, but, you know, with the North County as a whole. I am a little surprised that the revenue projection here, that for Morro Bay, which is growing and continued projected to be growing here, would be more than Atascadero. Do you know why that would be?
That's exactly why I think we put this around 500,000. They, they do have a growing revenue, and I'm not sure why that is. It's a little bit of a tourist town. It's possible that there's more tourism there, and that's part of that market. But in terms of your other question about consumption, we have no data on which community consumes more. And that may not even be reflective of sales in each community. It may be based on who's going to that community for tourism. Atascadero is not necessarily a tourism community, it's a little different. So there's so many different variables in that, but you're dead right. It's hard, it's hard to, to nail this down. Morro Bay has, you would think, have a much smaller market area. I mean, they've got La Sosa, they've got Cayucus, Morro Bay, the, all these coastal areas that are, you know, roughly half the population when you look at the North County, which is over 100,000 people with Paso and Creston and Templeton and Santa Margarita and, and, San Miguel, it's about 100,000 plus, you know, it's a pass-through community on 101. So the potential could be even higher. We just don't know. I don't want to over, I don't want to be over optimistic because we all need to be cautious to the costs, as we're talking about as well.
Okay.
And the fact that Paso Robles could join the market and cut that in half, so.
Got you. Okay, thank you. I'll have a few more questions, but I want to pass it on first to Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor, very much, Mr. Mayor. Just continuing on for a moment on this theme of, of costs, let me make sure I understand that we've got both upfront costs that are about evaluating the, and could you put up the, the slide that you had with regard to the additional costs that you thought would be? What needs to be amended, I think you, you talked about? Because those are the, those are the, those are the staffing things that we would have to do just to process the, before we could get, get applicants to process the.
This is, yeah, this is the code amendment that would have to happen ahead of entertaining any use permit from a specific retailer. And then the other cost or other fee that other communities are charging is the nexus cost. Basically, the relationship of what it costs to manage that business and permit that business, there's an annual fee. And it's that annual fee that other communities are charging, that's like 80,000 or 90,000 dollars a year, in addition to that startup cost, which is that nexus cost of what it costs to process that use permit and monitor that business, which is in addition to the tax. Obviously, it's separate.
Right.
So there's several things.
The tax benefit is on top, the tax, additional tax revenue that a business generates is on top of the, the fees that are supposed to basically cover those marginal costs.
Yes. And then the third component of that is a community benefit program, which is another additional thing that you can require as a startup for these businesses, is them contributing towards a program to mitigate their impact to the community. So there's several factors in this that are additive.
Okay. So if we did these steps and, and determined what the costs are that we'd have to, to have and convert those into fees that, that businesses would pay, and assuming that we limited this to, say, one or two shops, so it's not a, you know, it's a specific number of locations and not a huge number, then if businesses decided that those fees were too steep and it didn't look profitable to them when they assessed what the market is, or they thought they could get their customers, et cetera, we just wouldn't have anybody applying for that land use, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so the downside is we would go through the steps that we see up here on this screen and not get any additional tax revenue in return, and those properties would be bought by other people that want to do other things.
Correct. And it, and speaking of staff work, this is the easy part. The more difficult part is processing a conditional use permit for an actual retailer, and then the follow-up from that, which involves the background checks and the monitoring and all the things that our police chief was talking about. This, this is easy compared to that, so.
Okay.
This I can bring to you tomorrow. Well, not really.
Well, yeah.
Got a general plan to get out of the way and a few other things.
Right. Speaking of which, we're just looking at what the load is on staff to, to deal with this. Can I assume that this is something that would not come back to us until after we've gotten the general plan basically in the bag?
Exactly.
And staff has a little chance to breathe and.
That's why I would mention March, April, May of next year. It's going to take us a couple of months to get all this nailed down. And again, there's a process. We would want to bring a draft to you along with some more data. We would want to then get direction from the community and then start the actual code update process. So to write this is easy, and that's, that's what I was meaning to. But to actually do this process is about four months, five months out. And so here we are in October, so we're looking at, yeah, we're looking at March, April, May.
Sure. Okay, so that you can, there, there would be a chance for, you know, by that point, the public safety facilities project will be in construction, and downtown is done, and the general plan would be in the bag, and so we can, you know.
Got a lot of cool things happening now that you mention it.
Absolutely. The staff has done amazing things in this town. Let me shift to another aspect of this for a second, and that's, I want to make sure I understand, do we have the authority to set exactly where this could and could not, this land use could and could not occur? So that if we, for instance, decided that in addition to the vicinity of school daycare park, et cetera, requirements, we wanted to say, and we can only have two of them, and they can only be either between Curburel and Santa Rosa off of, you know, some distance from El Camino Real, or be between, say, San Anselmo and, or north of San Anselmo, off of El Camino Real, is that we would have that opportunity to make that, and we wouldn't be likely to get sued over that kind of a distinction? Is that correct?
That's correct, absolutely. You can choose one location in the entire community, or you can choose many locations in the entire community.
Okay.
Or you could choose a location and have, you know, distance requirements within it. So you can, anything, as long as it doesn't conflict with the state law that requires the separation from the list of items, the schools and daycares and everything else.
Okay, so we could have a pathway to make this much simpler about where this could happen? Okay. Then in terms of, sorry, I'm looking back at my notes here. If, yeah, let me, let me come back to it if, oh, I know, I know, the, the question was, I was looking, thinking about the, the tax revenue and how long it would take to sort of pay back that initial bolus of effort. But the fact is that the, the startup fees would pay for that initial bolus of work of doing the conditional use permit and, and the outreach required in that and all, all of that work, right?
That's the hope. That's the idea, is that you have that nexus between that initial fee and the cost of the services the city is providing.
Okay, and so then the question would be having a fee that appropriately reflects the ongoing costs so that PD could do the monitoring. Okay, and I want to switch to a different thing, and that's in terms of other effects. I saw in our, and I'm going to look at Chief Suddles for this, I saw in, in this wonderful staff report, which, if you haven't read this, it's really thorough, it's very helpful, that other communities have not seen increases in crime. I wanted to ask specifically about whether other communities, after they had adopted this, had seen increases in DUIs. And, and if you could address, tell us a little bit more about how that, whether or not you can really look at marijuana-related DUIs.
Right. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Funk. Specifically, speaking of DUIs, and quite honestly, across the board with all crime, I've, I've reached out to all the three cities that have already put this type of storefronts into their cities, and they all are unanimously said they didn't have any issues with increase in crime. They, they say that the regulations that, that are put upon these types of stores and the, the manner in which they approach their responsibilities has kept that from being a problem, and that includes DUIs. We don't necessarily see an increase in DUIs when it comes to marijuana. And that's been, since, we showed an earlier slide that indicated that since 2016, marijuana's been legalized, we don't necessarily have a standard field sobriety test like we do for alcohol. So to say that there are no, there is nobody out there driving under the influence is not what I'm trying to imply. What I'm trying to imply is that we haven't had an increase data-wise empirically that I could show you that would say we've had an increase in DUIs regarding, being under influence of marijuana.
My red light's turn on. Okay, there. I'll just leave it on while we're engaging. How, is, the, the follow-up would be, have we seen any increase in, in a really noticeable increase in traffic accidents generally that would have, which would be the, the other way, if you can't figure out that it's DUI because you can't really test for the marijuana as well? But if it was impairing drivers in to a significant degree, we would see an increase in accidents?
Correct. And I do not have any data that would support an increase in accidents due to marijuana.
Okay. So the work of the police department, after, once everything's approved and a business is up and running, the ongoing work, could you characterize what that is that the police department would likely have to do?
Yes, and a lot of, and again, a lot of this is mandated by the Business and Professions Codes, and I'm just going to hit a couple of these. We have the background investigations that need to be done for all new employees, and this is obviously going to be a heavy load upfront, and then, but my understanding is that this business does have relatively high turnover, so that's something that you can expect to see on a regular basis. There are, I grabbed my glasses, I'm wondering why everything looks blurry. Background checks, confirming compliance from, you know, the regulations that the storefronts themselves have, going there, making sure they're complying with security, make sure they're complying with having their own security guards there, the facilities, they have their cameras, and we have access to have 24/7, which means that we have to have monitoring on our side as well. Enforcing local ordinances and inspections and compliance inspections. And that's, I mean, that's by my list here, I'm sure there are others that I'm missing, but, but there are some, and those are all ongoing, the things that we would have to, to do. And it's not necessarily the task itself, it's also, you know, and who would do it, but if, if, you know, it's also a concern that I have as to if I have an ancillary duty that I give to somebody else, that person's taking away from the ancillary duties that they're doing already and taking perhaps away from some of the services we provide. That's a concern that I have.
And hence, then, then the expectation that there might be some additional staffing to make sure that there wasn't an impact?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember News.
I'll stay with the police chief. I guess Councilmember Funk spoke about, one of the questions I had was the testing for cannabis. I know metropolitan areas, sorry, it's going to take a while to get used to these. I'm not used to the feedback. Anyways, some of the metropolitan areas do field sobriety tests on multiple things, alcohol as well as cannabis. Some of the metropolitan areas are using blood tests for marijuana. Is that something that we will be using in the state?
I don't have any plans to start doing it at this time. One of the problems that we have with THC levels in the body is that it can, it can, it doesn't necessarily correlate to the level of impairment at the time of driving, like we have narrowed it down with alcohol. In other words, I can take the metabolism, metabolism rate of somebody and be able to calculate what their blood alcohol content was at the time they were driving based off of what I have for their blood alcohol content level at the time I took the test. I can take into consideration a lot of different tests that we put into place that don't necessarily exist for marijuana. So that's why it becomes so challenging to be able to say that the impaired driving that was witnessed was due to the level impairment, because it's hard to dictate exactly what that level impairment was at that exact time. So even though there are certain tests that will tell you whether or not there's THC in the system, it's not something that we are seeing great levels of success through prosecution.
On some of that field sobriety tests, my understanding is, is some of our younger generation is vaping cannabis, marijuana, however they're choosing to. Is that changing how it registers in their system based on how it's consumed?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, so the only way to know would be a blood test or a field sobriety where they're impaired of some sort, and then you know if they've been using.
Correct.
Okay. If we're looking at the staff report, it looks like page 111, we have a whole list of security requirements by the city. I don't know if we can pull that up on the list, or up on the slide, so we can look at that as a group.
Which page, which page did you?
111.
I'm not sure I have, but I think I can pull the, I think we can go to the agenda report and probably get that to this.
So one of the things that we listed here is we're doing this comparison to see if this fits the mold for our city. This is, we compare from San Luis, Grover Beach, and Morro Bay. And we talk about, you know, adjusting costs of permits to compensate for the additional use of resources. Mr. Lewis spoke to needing equivalent of one and a half FTE to operate this program. But in this list, San Luis details that they require the additional security plans to be reviewed to the satisfaction of the police chief and the city manager. And looking at that, does our staff have the additional time and resources to allocate to a program like this?
There would certainly be a, a learning curve, and that was one of the reasons why I think some of the other agencies that you spoke of decided to outsource some of these things. However, some of the. However, some of the, like Morro Bay has not, and Grover has not as well. So it would, there would definitely be a learning curve, but it can, it can be done, because it has been done.
So is that something you could outsource? Or at this point, we're saying, it would require how much time from you and how much time from the city manager to enforce this if it were to go forward?
Let me make sure I understand the question. Yes, it can be outsourced.
I think this will require time from the police chief and myself, for sure.
How much I'm asking?
I don't know, but you ask us to do a lot, so there's one manager and one police chief, so we'd have to figure out that and what gives. And then what gives is the kind of thing that might have to be outsourced. Because the political importance of this to the community, if you move this forward, I will be involved and I will ask Chief Suddles to be involved. So it will involve our time. I'd have to determine then what I'm not doing, and we'd want cost recovery for that, for sure.
Okay.
But it, to Chief's point, it can be done, it's just a matter of if it pencils out and we put all the fees together for cost recovery.
And the reason why I brought it up is because when you look at Grover Beach and Morro Bay, they have really strict requirements of what the police department has access to. And one of them talks about live access to video footage, video recordings, overseeing cameras, installation. It's pretty extensive of what has to go into place. And so I know we're a constrained city when it comes to our resources of our staff. Having us take on something else while we're in the middle of a general plan as well as doing our other day-to-day gets worrisome, because then we pull you off of something else to implement something that is going to require a lot of financial backing. Because in some of these organizations, they are hiring a full-time liaison to oversee this. And so your knowledge and the city manager's knowledge cannot be replaced with one person. And so if we are spending that additional hundred to 150,000 to outsource it, at what point is it benefiting us financially? The only other thing I'd like to ask for clarity from staff on is the childcare facilities. You mentioned that you look at childcare facilities when you start doing the maps. And when we looked at, I think it's page one, page 53, it talks about what constitutes a childcare facility. And so as we look at some of the corridors, the other cities had only, Morro Bay and Grover Beach have detailed that cannabis would only be in commercial and industrial zones. So if we were to apply something similar to our community, we'd be looking at 41 corridor, which has a large childcare facility. We'd be looking at some of the other industrial zones off a traffic way. We start getting close to schools, more childcare facilities. In the ordinance on page 53, it only addresses childcare facilities other than family daycare homes. Our community is full of family daycare homes. So do we look at the business licenses to determine if there is a childcare facility in those residential or some, you know, just backs to the commercial industrial zone? How do we know that we're getting all those childcare facilities?
Staff's already created a set of buffer maps that show all of the daycare facilities that we know that are licensed facilities and all of the schools and all of the parks and all of the criteria as mentioned by the state. But that's only a starting point. So if we go down the road with this and council decides to move forward with an ordinance, the next step would be, okay, then you invite someone to come in for a conditional use permit, and you again have to look at that criteria very carefully to make sure that that use permit for that location is going to meet those state-required separation requirements from that list of land uses. So that's something you would have to do each time you entertain a use permit, regardless of what we've shown you on these maps tonight. Those maps will change
Tomorrow.
All the time, every, every, every week, every year, every month. And so it's a moving target, so, but you only get, I mean, when they apply for that use permit, you pull that map and you, you look at those things very carefully and that's it. If a facility happens to move in after that particular land use opens up, there's nothing we can do about that, and, and they've chosen to do that, and that conflict's going to exist, but a new one couldn't go into that place, so.
If you allowed cannabis into a certain area, childcare facility came in and said, we have a childcare facility, we want to put it here in this commercial and industrial zone, but we can't because there's an existing cannabis?
I think they could go in. I just don't think you could put a, another cannabis retailer within that if they opened up. So I think in the inverse, it may work now.
Not that you would.
That's a good legal question, though. I don't think, I've ever been in that kind of position, that, that hasn't come up.
And I know the word.
Could that happen? And so Dave's pondering a thought here, in the inverse.
And I only say that because as we start looking at commercial industrial uses and we have a lot of overlapping uses on 41 that don't conform currently, but as we're working through the general plan, we're evaluating those uses, use permits. The other thing is, is would churches count? Because they provide childcare on the, the weekends, are, are they impacted?
Yes.
Okay.
So you would want to separate yourself 600 feet from churches as well. So when you look at places like Moro Road, or you look at areas that are in certain parts of the city, they're not going to be conducive to this land use. You're only going to have very small pockets that are going to be conducive that truly meet these separation requirements and truly work.
And if we plotted that out, like on page 99, you have the, the red zone and the green zone. If we plotted everything out with that criteria, we'd probably be very restrictive already because our limited use of commercial and industrial areas.
Exactly, and actually I have a whole bunch of maps that I have attached.
Trying to look at. It might be off a page number. Okay, thank you for your time. Thank you for the extensive amount of information in here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I wanted, sorry, I wanted to add one more clarification. Well, you mentioned churches. A church that does not have a daycare would not be conflicted. The way I was answering your question is, assuming a church has a daycare, it would be conflicted. So not just a church, but one that offers daycare or, or school services.
So ABC in particular would be conducive because they share.
Definitely, they have a school as well.
But if they had a Sunday school on the weekends for children, that doesn't count? Or does it? Because that is childcare.
It's not a daycare.
As well as summer camp, that technically, summer camp where those kids go can count as a tax deduction?
These are, these are the in-depth questions. The council could choose to include these things if you wanted to. I think as, as written, that things that are ancillary to religious institutions probably are not, I would ask the attorney, but are not daycare center. A Sunday school and ancillary activities on a Sunday are related to the church and the religious practice. I think if you wanted that, you'd want to make that specific in the.
Camps during spring break, winter break, summer break.
There's two levels of regulation here. You're going to have the state-level regulation that sets forth what a school is. There's going to be definitions, regulations, and what daycare is and so on, so we would look at those. We can also add additional regulations based on our zoning code as to where we, if council directs it to move forward, where you would like to see it. Give you an example, in the city of Solvang that we represent as well, there is exactly one zone where it, where cannabis dispensaries can be located. It is an industrial zone next to a rock quarry. And it's not necessarily that the city picked that specifically. It just said only C1 zones, for example, and there was only one in, in the city. Same as what Mr. Dunsmore is talking about with the overlays. If the council thinks there is a permissible area or an area that would work for this, you do an overlay zone on that, and that's where that growth of that business would exist. But you take a look at what the impacts are to the other types of uses, such as daycare, such as Sunday school, whatever you want to look at. That's a local-level regulation that would be within your purview.
How would that pertain to city-run facilities, like community center for camps?
That would be another one of those local regulations as well. If you wanted to put an overlay that does not involve that particular area, that's something within your purview.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm very eager to get out to public comments, so I'm going to defer my other questions, but Councilmember Funk has what she promises is an extremely brief question.
Yes, I wanted to, to ask if you could briefly characterize the customers? Because a lot of our concern is what's the customer traffic coming in and out of these stores? And is it, are these people that are likely to be problematic to be, be near churches or daycare centers or, you know, some, you know, within several hundred feet of a residence, that kind of thing?
I don't know that I can answer it accurately on kind of a speculative customer for what would happen in Atascadero. I will tell you that when Solvang was going through its process, the community development staff and myself visited a number of the dispensaries. And apparently, the largest growing population was people over 65 years of age. They were coming in, and while we were in the, in the dispensaries that day, it may have just been the time of day that we were there. That was my personal observation. Now, can I say that will apply to Atascadero? I don't think there's any way to predict that with any kind of certainty.
Okay, and, and lastly, with the, the industrial area along traffic way, under current rules, be something potentially that, where, where a facility could locate?
Any, any zone that allows for commercial land use, you can modify that zone to allow either an overlay zone or you can modify it to add this to that particular list, yes.
Okay, because this.
Retail sales.
Just for a moment of levity, I can't resist the thought of Atascadero hay and weed.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and I think if, if we move forward, there's be plenty of time to talk about some of the, the details of, of some of these questions. I'm very eager, as I said, to hear public comments. So if you, member of the public would like to comment in this, you please go ahead and line up for the podium. We'd love to hear your comments. So we'll begin, Mr. Osland.
Good evening, Jeff Osland. I'm torn, and I'm torn because I have been in Megan's in San Luis to buy cannabis for one of my dogs, because it was a third of the price there versus going to a pet store. So although I don't partake, I know older individuals that do partake in gummies or others, and it seems to help them for different reasons. If this was a million dollars in tax base and Paso didn't have a cannabis dispensary, I think we should go for it, period, end of story. But if Paso's going to change their mind and actually put one in, then we have one in North County, and it is what it is. I think that if we're stealing tax revenue from the city of San Luis Obispo, it's always a good thing because we should put our tax revenue in North County and especially here in Atascadero. And a million dollars in tax revenue would make sense because that wouldn't, that could decrease some of our sewer rates. But on a serious note on this, I'm very torn. I mean, I have an eight-year-old at home, and I'm always worried about access at school, older brothers or whatever. But people are already buying cannabis. They're going to San Luis, they're going to Morro Bay. I run my business route every Tuesday through Morro Bay and San Luis, and I teach, I see two dispensaries, there's always a guard at both of them. They're clean establishments, I don't think it brings in a wrong crowd. I just worry, you know, where the access is and what's seen and what's visible and how to explain it, kind of like our homeless population when they're hanging out on 41. They unhouse, is how do you explain it to your daughter? So again, I'm torn, I think there's some benefit. Does it outweigh the negative? I'm not sure. But on the other end, when you're talking Morro Bay, Morro Bay is in financial dire straits. They have been since the plant, the power plant closed. So you want to tell me, please, how we would have a burden on our city, on staff, if Morro Bay doesn't have it? I think that's a, an unfair, unfair comment based on a city that has 10,000 residents versus ours that's close to 30,000. If Morro Bay can do it, we can do it that way. So I leave it at that.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Brett Boyle. I'm a life, I've lived on the central coast for most of my life. I've worked at Atascadero State Hospital for 25 years. And in that 25 years, I saw a lot of violent incidents. Usually we can get a call on the unit and they said, hey, can you send the biggest guy? I was usually the biggest guy, so I got to see a lot of that stuff. Anyway, I suffer from PTSD. Managing PTSD is a daily challenge. And I found that cannabis products, specifically those I purchased from Megan's Organic Market in San Luis Obispo, will help me cope in a healthy and effective way. The products they sell are consistently high-quality, responsibly sourced, and the staff are knowledgeable and compassionate. Right now, I have to drive down the Quest de Grade every time I have to visit their store. That drive can be difficult, especially for seniors and others in our community who rely on those products for pain, anxiety, or other health-related issues. Having a Megan's Organic Market here in Atascadero would save time, gas money, and make life easier for a lot of us in North County. Beyond the personal benefit, I truly believe that having a dispensary downtown would be good for Atascadero, who would bring responsible, steady foot traffic to our downtown area, people who might also stop to grab lunch, visit a shop, or support other local businesses. Megan's Organic Market has proven itself to be a professional, community-minded company in San Luis Obispo, and I have every reason to believe they'll be the same here. I urge you to approve this product, project. It's good for residents, good for local business, and good for the community as a whole. To answer a question one of the councilmen had earlier, why would people go, choose to go to a store instead of having it delivered to their house? I, I go to the store for the same reason I go to the supermarket, because I want to see the selection. I don't want to have to pay a delivery fee and tip the delivery driver. The tax is outrageous on marijuana products right now, and you add the delivery fee and tip for the delivery driver, which you're kind of obligated to do. It makes it a lot more expensive. So that's why we don't use the, the delivery service. Thank you for your time and considering the needs of people like me who call Atascadero home.
Thank you for your comments and thank you for waiting. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, my name's Ron Overecker. I'm the president of the Atascadero Police Association. The APA represents the sworn officers and public safety dispatchers who protect our community. The APA is not opposed to the retail sales of cannabis, although we respect those who oppose retail sales on moral or ethical grounds. There is a concern that allowing retail cannabis sales will create a burden for the officers in keeping the community safe. The cities of Morro Bay, Grover Beach, and San Luis Obispo have already allowed retail sales and do not appear to have suffered any appreciable increase in crime, although those communities do have an increase in income derived from cannabis sales, which has funded their public safety programs. I know the chief has shared the facts regarding the crime rates. Still, as an association, the perception that allowing retail cannabis sales will somehow increase crime has not been our experience. And personally, for every one DUI arrest I've made due to cannabis, I've made 50 due to alcohol. That said, the proposal does place a burden on the police department to regulate these types of business, businesses properly. The need for additional law enforcement collaboration and monitoring may distract our staff from their regular duties of protecting the community unless further funding for sworn positions is allocated. The association's concerned that as if approved, this burden would be absorbed among existing staff. We would hope that the increased responsibility for overseeing these businesses would remain with our police department with appropriate funding for in-house staffing. I was encouraged that if approved, the staffing analysis would be completed as part of this proposal. Unfortunately, there appears to be more than substantial revenue gains to offset the additional staffing costs associated with approving retail cannabis sales. Our city has demonstrated its commitment to public safety by increasing police staffing levels in service following the passage of the sales tax measure D20. I remember that many citizens opposed the sales tax, believed that the increased revenue would not go towards public safety, but that just was not the case. And in the same way, we believe that the income generated from retail cannabis sales would provide another funding source for public safety and essential city services, provided that a portion of the revenue is allocated for sworn personnel to collaborate and monitor these businesses effectively if approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overecker. Next speaker, please.
Council and staff, my name is Mike Zappas. I live on El Camino here in Atascadero and have for 30 years. I just want to thank you for letting, getting the public comment on this. On Mr. Dunsmore's overlays, I just noticed that the downtown area, which floats between the junior high and the high school, is, would be an acceptable zone. And I just want to urge you, councilmembers, to keep in mind that the part of our population that's the most vulnerable for a gateway drug. that's the most vulnerable for a gateway drug like marijuana is the, is the junior high and high school, not kids in daycare, not the kids at Sunday School. The kids that we have to worry about are the young adults that are, may not have the kind of judgment that we have here in this room. And, and lastly, I'd like to say, we're talking about the sources of revenue, we're talking about the cost, but I want you to consider the young man that was in the In-N-Out parking lot, shooting up, on the phone with his mom when he died. It's not going to show up in the DUIs. It probably will show up on the trips to the hospital by our police department, but, I mean, by our ambulance. And that's really what we should be looking at. And I think it's, it's a tragedy, and I think we ought to try to avoid it in our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. I'm Don Clickard. I've lived in Atascadero for, since nineteen seventy in Charles. I did the math, and it's about fifty years in Atascadero Unified Schools in the services of that district. Second, this was the second part of, of my reason for being here. I kind of changed up a bit on, on what I had written here, because as I've listened to the conversation, and there's some really interesting facts and some figures that are provided by staff, and I think that it's important that we listen to those. I want to talk to you a bit about Ricky, Jake, and Jeff. Because in two thousand eleven, the Atascadero Greyhound Foundation was a, an organization that we were devoted primarily to the development of athletic facilities at the high school. But in two thousand eleven, Ricky and Jake and Jeff suffered from drug overdoses. At the church service for Ricky, it was pointed out that it was a new program in Atascadero that was going to be dedicated to the mitigation of the drug use of our adolescent, adolescent population. And it came when Jeff, the third of those three guys that I mentioned, he, he was actually the first one, and, and his dad came to me afterward. He's on our, on the board of Lighthouse, our Greyhound Foundation at the time. And he said, Don, we have to do something. Well, the something became Lighthouse, and Lighthouse has been in existence as its own separate organization under that same nonprofit. But since two thousand eleven, doing what's best for kids, that's our goal. And I, I thank Mr. Zappas for doing a good lead for that, because it's important to us to know that we know marijuana is a gateway drug. We also know that marijuana is effective in the treatment of the, the problems that people have talked to you about here earlier today. But I'm opposed to the cannabis store in Atascadero because so many people in this community have worked so hard to prevent the drug use of, within our adolescent population. There are many avenues for drugs, for drugs to find their way into our adolescent population, into our community. And we can't stop them all, and we never will. But we should limit the possibilities whenever we can. And we should not provide one more opportunity by allowing a cannabis dispensary in our town. Consider doing what's best for kids. And I appreciate your willingness to offer this time to us to speak, and I certainly respect the, the views of the people who have their reasons for favoring it. I wish we wouldn't do it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Josh Cross, president and CEO of the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce. Don Clickard, I have so much respect for you and the work you do at Lighthouse. Thank you for all that you are doing. The Chamber appreciates the opportunity to speak tonight regarding retail cannabis as a permitted business type in our city. Cannabis retail is already a legal and tightly regulated industry in California. Our neighboring cities of San Luis Obispo, Grover Beach, and Morro Bay have proven that it can operate safely, responsibly, and with strong community benefit. Atascadero residents already purchase cannabis, just not here. Delivery services from other cities currently generate about thirty-two, thirty-two thousand in local tax revenue, while the bulk of those dollars go elsewhere. Allowing retail storefronts would enable Atascadero to retain that revenue and reinvest it into public safety, infrastructure, and youth programs. Based on nearby cities' experience, annual revenue could reach, well, two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars, which is a meaningful contribution to our budget without raising taxes. Beyond the fiscal benefits, the public safety record from neighboring communities is encouraging. Police departments in Morro Bay, Grover Beach, and San Luis Obispo all report no measurable increase in crime after retail stores opened. These businesses operate under strict state and local requirements, which can be applied and customized to our community's specific needs. In addition, cities often require a community benefit program where retailers contribute directly to local initiatives like health education, youth engagement, and nonprofit work such as Lighthouse. And that's a model we can adopt here to ensure there's direct reinvestment into our community. Allowing retail cannabis is not about promoting usage. It's about recognizing a legitimate business sector, ensuring local control, and keeping Atascadero competitive. And I think if we were to go first, that Paso might think twice about going next. However, the Chamber also recognizes that this is a complex issue, and we intend to continue evaluating it carefully. While our board is generally supportive of allowing retail cannabis, there is not unanimous agreement. We believe it is important for Atascadero to learn the long-term experiences of communities of similar size before making a final decision. Some of the questions we hope to explore further include whether those communities have seen an cannabis-related emergency room visit or mental health incident increase, as well as potential concerns about public use, odor complaints, and the normalization of consumption in traditionally family-friendly areas such as Sungin Gardens, Lake Park, and sports fields. The Chamber is also interested in reviewing any available data on DUI traffic accidents involving drivers who test positive for THC, although Chief Suddles, thank you for touching on that tonight. As an organization that exists to support the business community, the Chamber believes it's essential to uphold the right of all legally operating businesses to conduct business in our city. We also recognize that cannabis businesses and family values should not be thought to be mutually exclusive, as many upstanding, responsible residents in our community use cannabis products safely and in moderation. Supporting legal enterprise does not mean compromising our standards or character. Atascadero can both be welcome legitimate businesses and continue to be a community known for its safety, family values, and strong sense of belonging. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jamie Jones. I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of Atascadero, which is almost half of my life. So haven't been here as long as Dawn, but feel like I've been here for quite some time and raised my kids here. And so I'm not here representing any particular person. I think some of you know that I have represented cannabis farms within the county and incorporated area, but I'm not here. We haven't represented retail cannabis storefront. Don't, don't plan to, but just here talking as a resident. So I'm in support of retail cannabis. I'm not a user of recreational cannabis, but I see it as a choice. It should, it's a, it's a legal product that I think our residents should have the ability to choose to spend their tax dollars in our community. And I think what the information is shown in the staff report is they are already purchasing cannabis product, but purchasing it in our neighboring cities and giving our tax dollars that we could have here, the benefit we could have here in Atascadero, giving that to San Luis and to Morro Bay and to Grover Beach. The numbers that were included in the staff report, I think it said, and I'm looking at North County in, in, in its entirety and not just Atascadero, forty percent of Megan's customers are from North County, and I think Morro Bay was twenty-seven percent. But if you look into those numbers, there's five other retail establishments that didn't give the percentage of customers that are coming from North County. So there are more. I, I think that the estimate of five hundred thousand dollars, I personally, and I'm not an economist, and I don't have the exact numbers, I don't have the facts, but I think it's going to be more. I think there's more of a demand out there than, than what we're thinking. And, you know, there's the, the notion, oh, Paso might be first. If Paso comes, then we're only going to get two hundred and fifty thousand. We don't know that, but I, I think what we know is that we should be first, and we should be, we should compete with Paso, and we should be the ones to get the first retail cannabis store in our community, so that maybe Paso doesn't get it. And then we do get the five hundred thousand, maybe even a million dollars. We, we can keep that tax money here. And then looking at, I see I'm out of, running out of time, but if we're going to be looking at it, I think that community benefit program would be something really important to include, so that we could give those additional funds to, to organizations like Lighthouse, so we can do the education for the youth. The cannabis dispensaries, they aren't targeting the youth. They're, they're targeting people over twenty-one, legal age, to purchase a legal product. So I hope your council will consider moving this forward. I think it would be a good add to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is James, and I'm a resident and a homeowner and a business owner in Atascadero. And thank you for the review of cannabis in our city and thinking about moving forward. On a commercial and a commerce sense, having the cannabis store would bring in some degree of revenue. There is also, the city needs to bring in more retail jobs, expanded storefront offerings in Atascadero. And as I mentioned before, growing and increased business tax revenue. I appreciate the information that came in from Grover Beach and San Luis Obispo, Morro Bay, looking at the retail shops that have already been established and their track record. I think that is important to look at what exists in our county. On a very personal level, I have a, my, one of my sons, a business owner in San Luis Obispo, actually had migraine headaches and was able to get some cannabis deliveries and now is able to shop in San Luis Obispo. I also know a lot of people in North County that would prefer not to go down the grade to shop. And so I think it is a, a very fair thing to look at. And also, having an aunt who benefited quite a bit from sleep and anxiety, and was able to substitute some medicine that she had a lot of side effects for. And so I've seen some benefits there. And also a daughter that had some pain relief from a work-related. So I've personally seen some benefits and appreciate you taking the time to seriously consider this as part of the opportunities and offerings in our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Megan Souza, and I own Megan's Organic Market Dispensary in San Luis Obispo in Gualita. And I wanted to share a couple of numbers with you tonight. Eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-two is the number of my customers who have Atascadero on their ID as their residence. So eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-two residents of the city of Atascadero shop at my store, and I'm just one store. And that's about a third of the population of Atascadero. So Atascadero does use cannabis at a high rate, possibly higher than other places in the county, definitely higher than the state average. And I want to address a couple of things that came up. There have been several studies about the relationship between opioid deaths and cannabis legalization with really interesting results. It is the case that all of these studies concluded that opioid deaths decrease significantly when licensed cannabis dispensaries are present in the area. And also, on the topic of youth, 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 a comprehensive study done in twenty twenty-three by the CDC did show that cannabis consumption by youth decreased with legalization in Colorado and Oregon. And a couple of other concerns that came up I want to address, there was a lot of mention about the cost of staff time. And I want to assure you that operators will be happy to pay the fees to cover the cost of staff time. In Slow, we pay around twenty-six thousand for the application fee, which covers the cost of evaluating the security plans, processing all of the initial background checks, evaluating all of the financial, our financial plan, et cetera. And then we pay an annual fifty-two thousand dollar licensing fee, which pays for the ongoing cost of operating the program. And that covers the cost of our quarterly security inspections and our annual financial audit. And I will say, the city of Slow originally had two dedicated cannabis detectives. Now they have one very, very, very part-time cannabis detective. And the city had initially had a lot of staff. And now they have one cannabis liaison. And I hope that she's part-time because we use very, very little of her time. There was also a question about who are these cannabis consumers? And I think it's really demonstrative to say that our top three SKUs at our dispensaries are low-dose CBN gummies that are used for sleep. So that's an example of who our customers are and why they're using cannabis.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers? Yes, please come forward.
Hello, good evening. Hope you all are still awake. These things are awful. Okay, here we go. My time's already started. I'm Jackie Fields. I spoke during the annual kind of board meeting when you guys were reviewing this originally. I am just really grateful that you continued to have that conversation. A lot of those points that I brought up about what we should look at, you guys are looking at. You have a great staff behind you. So I hope you guys know how lucky you are to have that. Most importantly, as someone who lives in Atascadero and runs a small business in Atascadero and raises my kids in Atascadero and doesn't want to go anywhere except stay in Atascadero, because why would I go anywhere else? I drive down the grade to buy pot. If you want to know what people look like, they look like me. I have lost way more friends to alcohol and hard drugs than I've not lost one to marijuana. I know many people who use it, like myself, to manage stress, PTSD, and trauma. And those are the conversations that I have with my children, just like I do when I see people living on the streets. So we've demonized this industry for a very long time, unrightfully so, kind of like burning witches at the stake. They just made beer people. Those dummies were drunk. They weren't under spells. So that was just my beer reference for October. Hope you liked it. And one of the biggest things I think about being able to spend my money here is also not buying it on the black market. Wanting to find that resource for myself, knowing that it is something that helps me, and I've been doing that a long time. I much prefer to know exactly what I'm getting, exactly who I'm getting it from, that it's been tested, that it is safe. There's a lot of bad product out there, not just in marijuana, but in every industry, right? And so when we stand behind, hey, we want people to be knowledgeable and informed and cared for, that does say something. I also want to say, I don't love delivery service because it reminds me that I should be kind of hidden in the dark. I enjoy going to the store and seeing people and reminding myself that I am not alone in finding this resource, that there are other people who are struggling probably in their daily lives, or use this just as a fun thing to do. But at the end of the day, there are people that look and act and talk just like me and you, and you've seen that tonight. And those are, those are your constituents. And so thank you, guys, for continuing to have this conversation. And I look forward to that tax revenue coming into our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Stephen Fagan. I'm thirty-five years old, and I've lived here in North County most of my life. I'm here tonight to speak in support of allowing cannabis retail in Atascadero and to share why I believe that Slow Cow Roots would be a great fit for this community. Right now, Atascadero has no legitimate or immediate access to cannabis legally. Consumers have to drive to Grover Beach or San Luis Obispo or Guadalupe, or end up taking their chances with unregulated products, as we've discussed this evening. That doesn't make sense, not for a town like Atascadero that's so thoughtful, practical, and cares about doing things the right way. I've watched what Slow Cow Roots has done across the Central Coast. It's different from the larger corporate cannabis commodities that we've seen in the area as well. They run clean, professional shops, and they give back to our community. They run clean professional shops and they give back to our community. And you know, that's something that's really important as we consider, you know, the different businesses that could take place here in Atascadero. This is all very exciting. One thing that really stands out with SLOCal Roots is their compassion program. That provides medicine to cancer and hospice patients. I personally know people who have benefited from this program and that's something that it sticks with you when you see it in person. What I believe we need in Atascadero is operators who care about people, who follow the rules and who are in it for the right reasons, to be honest. SLOCal Roots has already shown that they can do that. They hire local, they follow each regulation carefully, and they treat cannabis like the legitimate medicine that it is. I just want to let you know that Atascadero has the chance to do this right, to give people safe access, create local jobs, and keep tax dollars right here in town instead of sending them south. Another thing we've discussed this evening. I encourage the council to move forward with a program that welcomes responsible local operators, people who understand the community and want to be a part of it. I just want to also say that I appreciate your time for listening to a community member who wants safe local access and a fair chance for good people to do good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Austin Cannella and I'm the owner of SLOCal Roots, a locally-owned cannabis company with three successful retail stores here on the central coast. One in San Luis Obispo, one in Grover Beach, and one in Guadalupe. But before I was a business owner, I was just another Atascadero kid. I went to San Gabriel Elementary, Atascadero Junior High, and I graduated from Atascadero High School. My family and I still own several commercial properties here and Atascadero will always feel like home to me. I'm here tonight because we would love to bring SLOCal Roots to Atascadero because I believe the city has the opportunity to create a model cannabis program that reflects the values of this community while ensuring the long-term success of this industry. Across the central coast, we've seen what works, but we've also seen what doesn't work. Lawn Pulp, for example, opened its doors to dozens of cannabis operators all at once. The result was an oversaturated market with storefronts closing and businesses unable to sustain operations. The intention was good, but without limits, the system becomes unworkable. My hope is that Atascadero learns from that. I would encourage the city to limit retail licenses to just one or two operators and this ensures that those who invest here can succeed, hire locally, and give back to this community without being undermined by excessive competition. It's also critical that the city establish proper zoning. I think the use of overlays is a good tool for that and locations that make sense for access, safety, and community compatibility. Good zoning helps avoid future conflicts and it keeps businesses where they belong, operating responsibly and discreetly. I'd also urge the council to adopt a merit-based application rather than a lottery process or trying to limit it with setback requirements. You can use a third party such as HDL to grade and rank these applications. And this would allow the council to choose operators with a proven compliance history, financial stability, and true local roots. People who understand the regulations and have a track record of community engagement and are here for the long haul. Finally, I want to caution against the overtaxation of this emerging industry. Even the most responsible operators struggle to compete with the illicit market, which pays no taxes, follows no safety rules, and doesn't invest in the community. If rates are too high, customers simply return to unlicensed sellers and the city loses both the public safety benefits and the revenue it hoped to gain. At SLOCal Roots, we built our success on community involvement, compliance, and local hiring. We sponsor charitable programs, support local nonprofits, and create good jobs. That's the kind of partnership we'd like to bring here. Atascadero has a chance to write, to do this right, to create a small, sustainable, community-minded program that generates revenue, supports local families, and keeps cannabis sales safe and above board. So thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration and I look forward to hopefully working with the city to make this vision a reality.
Right. Thank you for your comments. It looks like we have one more speaker. Anybody else wishing to speak, please approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Alec. I am a father and a husband and I have a two-year-old at home. I've lived here in Atascadero for five years and if I get my way, I'm going to retire here. And I kind of wanted to speak tonight as an outsider. I do not use marijuana. My wife doesn't. And of course, I would be horrified if my daughter got a hold of it before she was of age. That being said, with the regulatory environment of California and especially when I've already come to know about Atascadero, I am not afraid and I support this measure. I feel like as a parent, it's primarily my job to make sure that my daughter is safe and that the regulations in place empower me to do that. And that beyond that, I don't think it is the government's job to get in the way of responsible people choosing to use a product that can be totally used safely and even beneficially. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. One last chance, seeing nobody else approach. I am going to close public comment on this item, bring it back to council. I'm going to start with myself because I did have some questions, you know, based partly on the comments and based partly on other council questions. There's been discussion of community benefit, which some other cities do. And that is to say that in exchange for being granted a dispensary license, some cities require cannabis dispensary operators to provide some sort of community benefit over and above the revenue that they're, you know, providing to the community. And I don't know how that is established. It looks like maybe in some cases it's a set amount. But using that example, if the council chose, it could do that and say, hey, you know, you can have to contribute a certain amount of money to prevention efforts, i.e. an organization like Lighthouse. That would be a plausible thing that the council could direct, correct?
Yes. And in fact, on page 48 of your staff report at the bottom, I've left in it a section there that's in our existing zoning, 9-17.008 of our existing code. It says that "conditions of approval may require that a commercial cannabis activity be subject to conditions that mitigate potential impacts of the sale of cannabis products in the community." So that's exactly that. So basically, if, for example, this allowance was in place and a use permit came forward, the ordinance already has that provision, which essentially is a community benefit program. So it gives you the option of where specifically you wanted to place that condition.
Although we don't require such a contribution from liquor stores, smoke shops, and places like that, correct?
No.
That sell intoxicating and health-damaging products.
This is unique in that.
Correct. This is, this would be unique to the cannabis industry. Correct? Okay. But we could do it. We could, we can do it and other places have done it. Okay. And then we've talked a lot about revenue. To be clear, the, for either the city manager or the admin services director, the revenue collected, it goes into the general fund. So it could be used for anything the council designates. So the council could designate that it goes to public safety, more law enforcement officers, or any other public purpose.
Yes.
Within the city, correct? Yeah. Just to be clear on that. Okay. What is the, what is the premise or the purpose behind having an overlay with distance limits? I mean, if you establish an area that is allowed to have these, why, why would you care if they're 500 feet apart right next door or, you know, 1,500 feet apart or a mile apart?
It's one method of limiting the number of retailers without actually limiting the number. For example, if you said, I'm going to have this overlay zone and this overlay zone is only 1,500 feet long. And you said, okay, we allow only one cannabis retailer for every 1,500 feet, then you've automatically limited it to one retailer within that particular overlay zone. And if you only had two of those overlay zones in your city, then you've automatically limited the number of retailers without having a merit program or a ranking or any of those other things that are often legally challenged. So it's just a methodology of limiting the number and having less saturation in your community. That's all that is. It's an example that staff brought forward and it's one of several opportunities that could be done to sort of facilitate that limitations.
And at HDL or anybody else in your comp, speaking with other communities though, talk about what's viable. Because I mean, I look at Grover Beach has four because they were first in on this. San Luis Obispo, a much bigger city, only has two. And a city our size could at most support two, maybe three of these, three of these in a stretch. Wouldn't the market decide how many a community would support?
We've heard from Lawn Pulp that it hasn't. So, and we haven't done that level of analysis with HDL. We could hire them to do such an endeavor. But what we've learned is we've looked at these other communities and seen how things have shaken out. I will tell you this, regardless of the number of retailers a community has, the revenue seems flat. So if you have five retailers, you're going to get the same revenue as you've had one. But your administrative and your staff costs might be higher if you have a larger number of stores. Of course, your fees would be commensurate.
Right.
These are all things to think about.
Right. And all of these things though, would not have to, is not, are not things that we have to address this evening. We really just need to address whether we want to provide staff guidance to proceed forward because all of these things, you know, where and how they're selected or whether they're just allowed based on criteria, et cetera, all of those things could be addressed at a future point in time.
Exactly. This is an evolutionary process and this is one step in that process. And if you say go, continue on, we would be asking you some details about which way to go, how to go, when to come back. And there's other phases of this process. So exactly, there's more information that needs to be garnered. We need a help of a consult such as HDL to give us some more financial data. And we would keep building this, we'd come back with some, some finer examples should council choose to go that direction.
And, you know, I realize, again, we, you know, we can discuss all those details later, but I want to ask a question that was asked of me. I assume that, you know, each of these places has a security guard, because I went to Grover Beach and the San Luis Obispo last Friday and I want to show something that when we get to discussion, but that you could, you could require discreet waiting areas where people aren't waiting out in public to enter these facilities, correct?
You can require any number of provisions.
You could screen.
Performance standards.
You could screen waiting areas or what have you. Yeah, got it. Okay. What I'd like to do here is see if any other council members have any other questions and then we'll enter into discussion. So please, questions if you have them of staff based, you know, coming from, as a result of public comment.
I have a question. Would the mayor be willing to let us take a short rest break before we go dive into the discussion?
A rest during break is in order. Okay, let's do that. We'll be back in seven minutes at, well, let's see. Yeah. Seven minutes, 8:50. Yeah, seven minutes, eight fifty. Okay, one minute. All right, if I could have council members take their seat. Okay, thank you, everybody. We are back. And we are now ready to have council discussion and deliberations and motions. And what I'd like to do, though, is I wanted to make a couple of comments first, and I had sent a couple of pictures to the clerk that I asked if she could load those. As I mentioned, I went to Grover Beach last Friday and went into one dispensary and spent 20 minutes grilling the manager with questions, as I'm known to do. Do we have those available? Okay. Okay, back up. That one. Okay, so I actually went inside this dispensary. And this is in an industrial area. And I was told later by the Grover Beach City Manager that this was a, had been a rundown industrial building. And that the little building on the left is where you enter and show your ID. And then are allowed to go through. You can kind of see a walkway on the left that's fenced off, and then you enter the place. And, you know, it has all kinds of stuff in there. One thing I would note, by the way, there was no odor in the place at all. I mean, it, you know, it smelled like this room does right now. And which is nothing, by the way, if you're watching at home. To be clear, that. I should have been more specific, I guess. To be clear, this room smells very nice. I mean, I was actually a little surprised. There was no odor at all in the place. And so anyway, I asked a whole bunch of questions about their operation there. And so then I decided I didn't need to go into all the others, but I would drive by all the others in Grover Beach, so I figured I'd go to the next photo. Because there's a point to be made here. So I pulled into this address. I didn't really know where it was, so I parked. And then I say, this is the sign that says NHC. That's the dispensary. And you can kind of see it's in an office park. And, you know, there's no, you notice there's nobody waiting. All I did see people go in and out. And it's just a sign with the name of the place. And I understand, I've looked, you know, in our staff report indicates these places, they don't, you know, you don't allow cannabis leaves on signage or anything like that. But then, if you show the next picture, as I left, I drove through the parking lot. And I saw this right next door, in the same building, and that says Flips Gymnastics. I thought, that's interesting. And then to show the next photo, I drove around the parking lot, a U-shaped parking lot, and went out, and this is a dance studio. And I thought, well, that's interesting. Those are typically frequented by kids. And so I went online and looked up these two businesses, and sure enough, all their pictures are of little girls in leotards doing, you know, gymnastics and dance. And so I asked the Grover Beach City Manager, I said, where, what's the story on these? How did these businesses end up in the same business park, right next door or across the parking lot from a cannabis dispensary? Were they always there, or what happened? And he said, well, when the cannabis dispensary was approved in that location, the gymnastics place was there. And there was a dance studio there. The dance studio was vehemently opposed to the dispensary going in, and they ended up leaving. The gymnastics place later left, moved to another location in Grover Beach on their main street. But then, since then, the gymnastics business has come back, and the new dance studio has opened up. So here you have two youth-oriented, family-oriented businesses that have deliberately chosen to co-locate in the same business park with a cannabis dispensary. And to me, that was very telling, because when I hear concerns about, oh, you know, it's going to be near kids or whatever, and it's like, wait, these are parents that are dropping their kids off. And according to the people I talked to, you know, probably some of them are going to the dispensary, but the point being, they feel very, very comfortable dropping their children off right next to this facility. And the point is, is because this is a very boring business. There's nothing exciting about it. It just serves a clientele that are interested in this product. And I just thought that was very telling in terms of, you know, some of the things we hear people express concerns about. That these businesses would, you know, make a decision, say, no, I'm going to move back in right next door to a cannabis dispensary. So I thought that was telling. And then just for edification, the next two photos are of the two other, I'm going to say rather blasé-looking dispensaries in an industrial zone in Grover Beach. And you can show the next one. So anyway, I obviously didn't go into these others. And then I did go into the one to Megan's Organic Market in San Luis Obispo. And when I went in, I was the only person showing my ID. When I went out, there were four or five people waiting in line, and that's why I asked the question about, you can require, you know, screening or whatever, if you don't want that kind of look. But it was just, it was very, you know, compelling to me to see those businesses there. And that when I talked to Grover Beach City Manager, you know, the entire conversation was centered around, this is, you know, they were first in, so they required a lot of things, did a lot of things. But it was just, it's just not, not, not a big deal. It's just another business. And that's, and I've listened tonight, I've listened to some of the concerns, and I, it's hard for me to move off that, I guess. Because the other thing that strikes me is I like to describe myself as being pro-business. And, you know, we in Atascadero don't have great sales tax revenue compared to other communities on a per capita basis. But we are literally telling our residents, you know, a certain number of them that want to use this product, get in your car, drive over the garage, spend your money in another town. And for me, that makes no business sense. It makes no sense in terms of providing services to our residents, because we celebrate that we have a lot more new restaurants in our city. We celebrate that there's a rooftop bar on Cielo serving alcohol. We celebrate that because not just does it bring us revenue, it allows our residents to enjoy their city. You know, and enjoy more services in our city. And for me, I just can't, I just can't get beyond wanting to treat this like any other business. And to, for us to, you know, throw away an opportunity and make substantial revenue that we can improve police services and other services over concerns that I think are not, are not borne out by the experience of other communities around us. I have, I just, it confuses me, to be honest. And so I might have, you know, a couple of other comments on that, but I want to open it up to my colleagues to each comment on their thoughts, where they're at. I would hope we would consider at least going forward with this, and then we could provide staff, you know, more detailed guidance at another time on what we'd like to see. Or we ask staff to come back and answer some further, if there's further questions, we'd like to ask staff. So. All right, I'll start on my left, Councilmember Peak.
Are we going for questions now, or you kind of went on a? Okay. Well, I did have a question. Just one final question is, at what point have any municipalities in California or counties that have legalized any form of either delivery, retail, have any of that ever been voted on by the residents of that city or that county particularly? Not voted on by five people representing the whole city? My follow-up question or comment would be, you know, if we didn't have bars, alcohol in town, and the city council said, we're going to start putting bars everywhere, too. That would be a big concern to people that live in town. Now, once things are adopted, generally, there's a big, if it's in opposition, there's a big uproar, and then it kind of settles down to how everything is. Bars have been around for decades, you know? But I'm just. Do you have an answer to that question before I move on?
Staff doesn't have that information. I think what you're referring to is sort of a ballot box initiative.
Right.
Process where the voters come up and say.
Public outreach.
We want to, you know, alter a city ordinance by ballot. There, I don't know if there's other cities in our state that have gone through that process.
Okay. So I think leading into, like, a lot of the, a lot of what we heard tonight, you know, there's legitimate reasons people use it. Not going to argue against that. You know, in 2016, we voted in favor, majority of Prop 64. I also don't believe personally that that meant that those people that voted yes wanted retail stores in all their towns. I think people voted for decriminalization more so. And if that was added on the Prop 64, I just don't think there'd be wide, the same widespread support if that meant down the street, there's going to be a cannabis retail shop. I don't know that for a fact. I think a lot of what the opinions that we have shared here and the opinions that we have in the city council are generally conjecture at this point. I can't definitively say that a cannabis store is going to lead to a kid becoming schizophrenic. You hear one side, the studies say, kids become schizophrenic. You have one side saying cannabis stores, there's studies that will support either side. You can dig them up all day, just like with any other political matter, any matter. I'm more concerned with, you know, the principle, number one, I'm against, like, special regulation for anything. So even if, like, you say, okay, we can do retail cannabis, or you can do strip clubs, or you can do more alcohol, you can do bars where you want them to do, like, anything you want to do. I'm not equating strip clubs to cannabis, but I'm just saying, like, anything that's not normally in Atascadero right now, I would never be someone to say there has to be a special tax for a special school program, and you can only have two. And the biggest people, the biggest players in the county are going to get the first shot at it because they have the most capital and they have the most clout. So I'm not in favor of special taxation for anything, pretty much ever. Or special requirements for certain businesses ever. And I think this one is, this type of sensitive subject, this business, everywhere you go, it's so regulated, it's so overregulated. And maybe, yeah, there's extra security, it's safer than some people might think it is. But it comes with a whole, like, slew of unknowns. You know, I think it's, I think the principal part of it is, in terms of regulation, I'm against overregulating and special regulation for certain industries in general. So, you know, there could be agreements there for some people that are pro it, for it, some people are against it. And number two, gateway drug. Anything that alters your mind is a gateway drug if you're predisposed to be addicted to something. I think alcohol could be your first drug, and then all of a sudden, you're on heroin, you're doing meth. I mean, whatever changes your mindset, if you're addicted personality, it's going to happen if you dabble. I also think that growing up in a household where the adults drink on a daily basis, even if they say this is what adults do responsibly, the kid is more likely to get to drink at an earlier age and possibly spark an addictive personality. I think adults that smoke weed around their parent, around their kids on a regular basis, conjecture. It's all conjecture. But in my experience, seeing it and seeing people that have addictive behaviors, generally, their story is that it was normalized in their childhood. So just want to put that out there, that gateway drug, everyone throws weed around, I mean, alcohol is a gateway drug. Everything's a gateway drug that changes your health. That's the way I look at it. So we shouldn't discount, and we shouldn't speak so highly of taxes and speak so little of youth. So I think that that should be something that, it kind of irks me when we obsess over how much taxes we can get, and we speak less about the consequences on the youth. I will go on to say that there's a legitimate, like, you know, Mr. Boyle, there's legitimate reasons to have medication. There's legitimate reasons to have it available and have it illegal. I'm for decriminalization if anything an adult wants to do. I'm not typically in favor of always having those things on display for the public and for kids and for whatever. It's kind of a dichotomy, the way I think on this topic. If you said, I want a one liquor store to be across from, on Pueblo Avenue by La Mexicana, wherever that liquor store is on the side of El Camino, right behind apartments over there, I would say, no, we're not putting liquor stores like that there. I mean, I would, it's already the cat's out of the bag, but I would, my opinion would be, I don't want a liquor store somewhere where, you know, the public is going to be. I'm going to get further down to my point. I also don't think that the problem is the customer of the cannabis stores. So we talk about demographic, the people that shop there. They're adult human beings. I mean, like, the problem is not the people going into the store. The problem is whether or not the public wants it there. And I think it's, I think it's just, it's important to remember that we're not, we're not slow, we're not moral bae, and we're not Grover Beach. And I think that it's really, we'd be doing a disservice to our residents to just push this thing through and say, yeah, we want to pursue this without taking some sort of outreach and going further down the policy hole. When I don't think, I mean, I think I probably talked to 50 residents over the past three weeks. Talked to CHP, talked to District Attorney. And law enforcement pretty much echoes what Chief Settle says, since it's been legalized in Prop 64, they don't go after it. If there's an illegal grow and there's like, you know, narcos involved, then yeah, the DA will get involved. But they're not going to go after a dispensary that's embezzling money, that's a different jurisdiction. So the DA is not really interested in it. CHP is a little bit different. They spoke about the DUIs a little differently, the two officers that I talked to. And that you don't really know, it's hard to tell, they don't display the same sort of behaviors. So it's an unknown, you know? Someone is a habitual. If someone, if someone smokes or eats cannabis on a daily basis, like I used to do, you're more or less sort of inebriated all the time. I mean, I'm not saying everybody's an irresponsible cannabis user. I'm not saying that. I'm not saying everybody's an irresponsible drinker. I think the more availability of it, it won't change the amount that the normal people will be using it. But it might make people that probably wouldn't normally use it decide to start using it. And I don't know if that's, from business, I'm very conflicted, because like, you know, it's a business. You don't, you want to be able to do what you want to do if it's legal. But I think that there's a certain, there's a certain threshold where I just don't want to feel comfortable making the call as a councilperson without having some sort of outreach from the community. Because a lot of people I've talked to, they're either indifferent about it, or they vehemently do not want it in Atascadero. And that's 50 random people, you know, my gym, coffee shop, anywhere I talked to, I've been asking people point blank, what do you think about this? Like, on the spot, and just seeing what they say. And that's a very random population, but it's also circles that I go in around town. I'm a pretty out-there person. I'm always around town. I always see people, I always talk to people. Go to Chamber Mixers. And the biggest ones that were, that were, the biggest, the biggest thing, I'm not going to, I didn't even permission to name names, but someone working in homeless services vehemently opposing it. And I thought that was interesting. And I think that I'm finding that certain people that are stereotypically, I would think, would be for it are against it. And certain people that I would think would be for it or against it are for it. So it's really, it's an interesting topic, for sure. And I think we have a big cross-section of Atascadero that just doesn't agree on it. And the overlay zones are interesting, not the overlay zones, but the red buffer bubbles. I'm still confused if that means no, if that means yes, the bubble, the red bubble. I'm guessing it means no, because it's red. But where they would go would be interesting, because you might have it down in Grover Beach, and you have an industrial zone like that. But around here, there's, there's very little, there's open retail space, but there's very little availability of commercial warehouse space and buildings. So you have to build a building, I mean, kind of in that industry. And I've recently found one, and where I'm, where I'm at, I asked the neighbors, would you be okay with a cannabis retailer in the center? Hell, no. Like, that's just their, I'm not saying that is everybody in town, I'm just saying it's, this is not a topic I think that should this is not a topic I think that should be discussed and decided by five people. And I think, I wish there was case study if it was like, um, cities that had opposition, because I think we're still leading too much with how much tax we can get out of this thing. And that's not the right way to do it. And, uh, I respect, uh, Cal Roots, um, Paul, sorry for if I got that wrong and Megan for coming here, but also I, I just discount your guys' opinion a little bit tonight, more so than like Mr. Boils or others, because you have a business interest in wanting us to do this. And so I would be, I would be remiss not to mention that. Um, I think that the market share is a big thing to me because I personally believe that there's a benefit to cannabis for certain people. I also think that you add more retail style things to a community that already has access to delivery. Maybe it's more expensive, maybe the gas and the time is about the same cost, maybe it's more of a social thing. It will create more cannabis users. And maybe that's fine, maybe that's what people want to do and they're, and they're, and, and everybody decides that's what we're doing. And they're adults and they have a free will. I'm just not sold on, on, um, a Tascadero for our, uh, sense of place right now.
Are, are you suggesting that perhaps, uh, um, a more detailed community survey or even a formal one, or are you even suggesting the possibility of putting this on the ballot or? Because it sounds like you're wanting more, you know, more feedback from the community, if you will.
Why don't you move on to someone else for a minute?
Sure, think about it. Some mayor pro Temderas.
Thank you. Uh, this was, this is probably one of the more difficult things that I had to deliberate on. Um, I, as a council member and planning commissioner for a number of years, I kind of prided myself on being able to remove my personal opinion out of my decision, because it's, that's, that's not what's important. It's, it's the community as a whole on, uh, on the decisions that we make up here. Um, and, and with respect to, so that, that's what's making this very difficult, because I have a very deep personal experience with, um, marijuana use. Um, sorry, this, this little order, and I thought it was going to be, um. I don't use it. I've tried it. I don't like it. Um, I've never been a user. Uh, uh, but I've known people that have and, uh, but, but I'm going to, before I get to that. Um, I would never vote up here to deny somebody that medical use, the, uh, medical access to this. I mean, if we were talking about, uh, allowing a medical dispensary, if that even, even is such a thing, then I, that would, to me, would be a no brainer. I'm okay with that. I have no problem with that. Uh, what I've researched and read about marijuana and the way it's changed over the years. Um, from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-two, according to cer, uh, things that I've read, uh, the, of the people surveyed, and of course you can take that with a grain of salt. It's, uh, gone from twenty-eight percent to forty-four percent for the number of people using it. So it, it most definitely has gone up. Um, we all, we all, maybe we all don't know, but the THC levels are incredibly higher uh, from the marijuana that was available in the seventies and eighties and even into the nineties. Uh, one to three percent THC levels, now twenty to thirty percent. Um, a, a, a study that I had heard, and I think I saw it was a spot on sixty minutes. Um, and I think they might have been referring to data that they collected from Colorado. That was, uh, there was an increase in DUIs. Uh, significant increase in DUIs from marijuana use. Uh, recent report that was published in, uh, I think the New York Times indicated that of fatal car accidents that have happened, and I don't know if it was nationwide or if it was a specific location or specific region of the United States, but of, uh, fatal car accidents, forty percent of the drivers had THC in their system. Uh, my personal experience, you, you know, is I believe that it is a gateway drug. And a lot of people don't, probably several people in this room that don't believe it is. I don't necessarily believe that everybody that uses marijuana will graduate to something harder. But I think if you look at the statistics of people that use hard drugs, started with marijuana, they graduate to harder drugs, become addicted, and in some cases. You'll find them in, sorry, I didn't know this was going to happen. In a restroom with a needle in her arm. Like my brother. I have a friend whose son is, I think he's thirty-eight now, uh, but he was a heavy marijuana user. I don't even know if it was heavy as a teenager and ultimately became very schizophrenic um, in his mid twenties and has ruined his life. He's doing much better, he's medicated. Um, but that has, that has, but that has been the effect of marijuana. Um, another young lady that I, I, I met through her parents, we became friends with her parents when I moved to town. She was about, I think maybe five years old, so I've been in town, I've been in the area for about thirty-four years. Uh, began using marijuana as a teenager, she graduated to harder drugs and overdosed. And when I found out that this had happened, I was absolutely blown away. She was this beautiful, young blonde girl that if you would bet me anything, I would have said that she doesn't even drink. Um, but she got into it and, and it just blows me away how somebody can get to a point where they want to put a needle in her arm. What, what is that drug doing to them? Um, so with these things in mind, it, um, th, this is my personal issue with the drug and feeling like I can't let myself be a part of of this being an easier access to it, one way or another. Um, I think most of us have, you know, as young teenagers, uh, when we're going to go out partying on Saturday, we're not old enough to buy beer, but we can find somebody that's twenty-one. Even if it's, hey buddy, don't even know the guy walking into the liquor store, a little harder these days, but forty years ago. Um, I did it, you know, and I'm sure that that practice is used even for cannabis shops. And anybody that's going to tell me it doesn't happen is lying. Okay, um, young people, as it was mentioned, as young as twelve, seventh grade, using marijuana. What is normalizing it? What is making this easy to get? I don't want to make it easier. Um, I'm sorry for being as, as sort of hard on this as, as I am, but this is, uh, this has been a very difficult thing for me to see so many people in my life, family and friends that have been affected by it. So I, I'm, it, it's a drug to me, it's a nasty drug. Um, I should probably feel the same way about alcohol. Uh, my mom had, I think, seven, eight brothers and sisters. Every single one of them was an alcoholic. The only one that wasn't was my mother. Uh, she didn't touch alcohol because she saw what happened. All of her sisters, except for two were older than her. But everybody, so it's, it's in the family, that, that propensity to be addicted to something is there. So this is something that, you know, I, um, I have a very difficult time with it. I'm pro-business, I want to see the city have, uh, good tax revenue and, um, but I think there's better ways to get about it. Um, I think the outreach thing is, is a good idea. I like what Seth brought up, I think that's good. I'm not personally convinced that there is a substantial tax revenue. I would like to hear more information on that. Uh, it, it, I mean, for what it's worth. Um, I think vaping, that's another thing I got in notes here. I mean, it's more than just gummies and smoking it and whatever other ways it's ingested. Vaping, I see so many young kids vaping and I don't know what they're putting in that stuff or where they're getting it or how they're getting it. Not supposed to be legal for them, but they're using it and they're using it out in the open. Uh, anyway, that's, that's my feeling on this. This is, this is a hard one. I, I, I'm, I'm using my personal feelings on my decision on this one. And I'd rather not see a cannabis shop for, for recreational use in a Tascadero.
Right, thank you, and, and we'll come back to that, to some of the things you mentioned. Uh, Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, I, I'm not a, personally, um, a cannabis user. Uh, the constituent that I talked most with who, uh, for, you know, ever, ever since I've been on the council, um, he started, he started talking with me about wanting to be able to have local access to cannabis uh, was my next door neighbor. Um, and he, um, we, you know, got to know what, what he was doing. And, uh, he's, he has now passed and that's not because of any issues with drugs, but because he was in his late eighties. And cannabis helped him control the shakes that he had as a retired fighter, firefighter and naval veteran. I was really, it was very helpful and he just like, can I please not have to drive so far to be able to see and choose what will work for me and to, to find the products that help. Um, as I look at this or treeing down, we, like, uh, many of you, I, you know, as a business owner, I want to be, uh, supportive of business opportunities in our community that are healthy for our community, um, that fit. And so I look at this and see, um, what, you know, do we have reason to not allow this particular type of business? If people want to do it, if it can be done in a limited way that works in our community. Um, and there, you know, there, there are a lot of ways this could go, but I, but I'm just seeing that the data doesn't suggest that this is as scary or as dangerous a business model to have. In, individual people may, um, have terrible journeys with um, any number of substances, um, legal and otherwise. Um, I am much more concerned about the impact of our, on our youth of illegal drug use. In particular, we are in the age of fentanyl. And drugs that people buy on the street, um, can be laced with fentanyl. To the point, we had a kid in this community that got a Percocet from a friend um, and died on his family's couch. Because it was laced with fentanyl. That's the illegal imp, market, you know, and this was just, now, somebody he thought he could trust, a friend. When we make it possible for people to have what many people talked about tonight, a known product from an identifiable source that will stand behind that product that is not going to get laced with other stuff and God knows what. Um, it's a lot safer for people, for those who choose to, um, partake of this substance, which is legal in California and which a majority of our voters support it being legal to do. Um, it's much safer if they get it from a store. And what I, what I see of these stores, my experience of that, uh, is consistent with what the mayor mentioned. Um, I go by, I confess this to, um, Ms. Souza at the break. I, I go by Megan's Organic Market in San Luis Obispo on Higera, um, when I'm, every time I go to an AHSOC meeting. Um, and there are lots of them. And I probably went by that store for about two years before I realized that it was a cannabis store. Because it was quiet and subtle and we could have, have stores that are, are of that, you know, quiet, that don't advertise that, you know, cannabis in light sort of thing, can be quiet. And I'm just imagining, um, you know, a quiet little shop somewhere, you know, say for instance, some, you know, somewhere over by the Valley Fresh Market and, you know, you have somebody coming out of the cancer center and they can go across the street or down the street and get the can, the products that might help with their chemotherapy um, or help them cope with the situation. And, um, that the availability of those legal products for adults in a very controlled environment um, does not seem like something that would increase the illegal availability and has the potential to decrease. Um, you know, it's not going to cure the black market, but it might take a little edge off of it. And every time we reduce some of the black market, um, we reduce the chance that somebody gets exposed to other drugs, um, that may be even more dangerous. Uh, so I think that, that having the opportunity for our, the people who are already buying cannabis who live here to be able to spend their money here, um, and if, if somebody, if we have a store too that somebody wants to open up. I, you know, I don't, I don't see us having, you know, four or five stores. I don't even really see three. I think a couple of stores would be plenty in this community. In part because if we have a smaller number of stores, it makes the oversight work for the police department much more manageable. Um, and that I think we need to be attentive to, um, you know, we are a community that, um, we don't, uh, set up a, we don't hire a czar and several people to start a new program. Um, we do things, you know, we staff very leanly because we are a community with very low tax revenues per capita. This would help us a little bit, it's not going to cure the world, but it, but we can't as a city give money to Lighthouse now, or any other not-for-profit. I mean, we, because we, we don't have the tax revenue. And being able to have a little bit better tax base um, is responsible to the future of our community. It helps us fund public safety, it helps us do the kinds of outreach. And, you know, I see us looking towards a benef, a business that would have, um, community benefits that we would look to have either as a specified thing for the business or the, uh, some, a way that the council uses marginal tax dollars. Um, we do a little bit more in youth recreation scholarships than we've been able to do, uh, through CDBG money. We could do, you know, maybe have some of that money go to Lighthouse to support the kinds of, the things to keep the youth engaged and out of street drugs. Um, by making it easier for adults to, um, to have controlled access to substances that they already buy and keep their tax dollars here. Um, I do think where this locates, locates is important. And to that end, um, with all due respect to the gentleman who, but, you know, that recognize the invaluable for generating downtown foot traffic. Um, I think it will be really problematic for this community to see that kind of business anywhere in the central corridor of the community where we have the junior high school and the high school. I'm less worried about proximity to elementary schools. Uh, in part because, um, elementary school kids are just too small to pass as adults and with a fake ID. Um, and most, you know, and, and the, you know, the smaller the, the person is, the less likely somebody is to think, oh yeah, I could just do that for you, sure. Now, uh, the, getting, as Councilmember Derris mentioned, getting somebody else to buy it for them. Um, it's, you know, the, the number of adults that would do that for a, uh, fifth grader is going to be very small, thankfully. Um, so I think we can, if, if it's a, out of the central corridor, um, I don't think, you know, five hundred feet or six hundred feet from the high school is nearly enough. Because high school kids are mobile and I think we need to keep this out of, out of the downtown corridor altogether. Um, and, and I, and I would be, you know, inclined to ask staff to consider um, just some very specific sections. You know, uh, the north of town, that, the, the, uh, the map didn't even go beyond, uh, south of Santa Rosa. the north of town. The, the, the map didn't even go beyond south of Santa Rosa because staff wasn't finding properties that would qualify there. And I think it, it also reduces the amount of chaos that could come of people thinking, oh, let me go in and grab a property and just in case this might be in there, and maybe this is 600, 800 feet instead of 600 feet from this, or is it a family daycare, or, or a bigger daycare, or, you know, all of that. Let's just establish a couple of, of zones where we think that this might be workable, that, that are already meeting the distance requirements that we have, but, you know, are sensible, and keep it out of the middle of town. I don't want to see it, you know, replacing Rite Aid, or whatever it's, and adding to the complexities of the interactions we have in a space that has high school students, junior high school students, and a methadone clinic. So, I think we can, but, but there is commercial property available in different parts of towns that somebody could choose to use in this way. I think a responsible business can be structured, and if we take a deep breath, I think we can have something that won't cure the world, but is a constructive way to move forward and generate the kind of revenue that lets us serve our youth better and create a wholesome environment in this community for families and kids, because we have the resources that our city needs to do the, the policing that is outreach and, and engagement. So, that's, that's where I am. Let's keep it simple. Let's keep it limited. Let's ask staff to come back with the details. And definitely to move forward with, the next step should be, with those kind of, come back with that kind of a program and some real outreach that we can, can talk in more specifics. Because most people, when asked on the street, do you favor this, don't have the benefit of knowing what actually these businesses are, how they are regulated, what the benefits or, or risks might be. And we, you know, they haven't read this wonderful staff report that we've, that we have. And so we want to be able to have some good educational materials, lots of conversations, and see if this isn't, isn't something that we can allow, you know, a few more people to build the business that, of their dreams, and in a way that would be constructive within the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you. It's hard to sit on this dais and not know people that are affected on both sides of this. I mean, we were elected by a community that voted it in on proposition, and then those that have come to us and asked us to hear this and consider the information. It's hard. I don't think that we need to be doing something just because it generates money, just because Grover, Morro Bay, or San Luis chooses to do it. I do agree that it is a gateway drug, as is any substance that alters someone's state of being. I do feel that there is more indications of our younger adults, our youth, using marijuana, and it's altering them and creating mental health issues. We haven't even talked about what it does to impair their system down that side. I don't think that there's enough information that says that we really want this in our community. I think that it's not compatible with our downtown. I don't think that's where it should even be considered. I think with looking at some of the other requirements of other locations, I just don't think that fits everybody in our community. So, at this point, I'm not willing to go forward on it. I don't think that we've done enough public outreach. I don't think we have the information we need to put something in that is permanent and that will have lasting effects on our youth, whether it be restricting it enough to where it doesn't overlap anything that corresponds to our, our children. We need to protect our children, and that's where I stand on it.
Thank you, and thank you especially for your brevity. I, I, what I feel here, I mean, I, and I think it's a good comment that we, we probably all know somebody who has died of some sort of an addict, or some sort of drug, whereas my brother began using marijuana and drinking in high school, and ultimately died of alcoholism at the age of 48. And we know, I think we all know people like that, that, you know, in, either in our families or in close associations. I see that, I feel like, you know, we don't have a consensus to move forward. But if you look at this first question here, outreach strategy, I think several of you talked about, you know, needing a, a more defined outreach strategy, or needing to do more outreach. And I'm going to kind of look to staff, but it seems to me that outreach comes in the form of either survey, it looks to me, I have an example here, that passed, that I picked up at a Lighthouse meeting last week or two weeks ago. You know, that was a survey that I think was done in Paso Robles, but the problem with, you know, non-professional surveys is the people that tend to answer a survey, if you just put it out on a website, are people who are very opposed or very for something. You, you don't get a random sample. You get the people who are energized about an issue, and they either, they either hate it or they love it, and, and that's, those are the people that respond typically. So, I'm curious with my colleagues, whether or not you would want to do some outreach in terms of either maybe a more professional survey, or if you'd want to punt the ball, and I, I imagine it may not have been done other places, but you certainly could put this on a ballot as a measure in the November 26 election. I'm waking up the city attorney there, and Mr. Dunsmore.
You know, we did find a community that actually did a ballot initiative for this, and it was the city of, or the community of, what was it?
Civic Grove.
Civic Grove.
Well, you were talking about it, I was looking to see, and in the 2022 ballot cycle, there were listed about a dozen cities that had put it to a vote of the people after the legalization under Prop 64, as to what that would look like. I haven't taken a look at each of the individual cities to see how it came about, whether or not it was a citizen-driven initiative, or a council initiative put on the ballot, but either are an option for this community, should you want to put it on the ballot. There are obviously attendant costs in putting something like that on the ballot that we would need to bring back for, for budgetary authority, but that certainly is a way to do it.
And it would be why you wouldn't do it until, you know, our regular election in November of 26. And thank you, I didn't mean to imply you were sleeping. You were just looking down, working, and I knew that, so.
Multitasking to the extreme.
I was like, if anybody at home thought that. So, anyway, I don't know if there's an interest in, you know, conducting some more to form, or formal survey, or, or some other form of outreach, which I'd see if staff would have any other suggestions. Because clearly, I mean, you know how I feel, you know, I, I put my feelings out there. I, I'd like to see us move forward, but there's obviously not a consensus up here to do that at this point. So, I'm looking at, do we need to do more outreach? Because that's what I heard from several of you.
I, I think that this is an important enough issue that the five of us should not be deciding whether or not a cannabis shop is allowed in Tascadero. If the voters approved it, then I, I'm not going to say anything about it. Then it is what it is. It's kind of like what we went through with, with 3CE. You know, we could have just said, nope, we're just going to give you one choice. But we let the voters, or we, we allowed them to choose, not to vote, but they didn't vote, but we voted to, to give them at least the options that were available. So, on something like this, for us, you know, there's, there's, this is a hot topic. This is, you've got people that are maybe on the fence, but you've got people that are absolutely opposed, and people that are thinking it's a great idea for different reasons on both sides, for both good or bad. But I think that this is a, the perfect type of thing to let the residents of Tascadero decide if this is what they want, instead of the five of us up here.
Councilmember.
I'll tie in on that.
Sorry, the heat sensor on this button is feeling my cold dead fingers. How much is it to run an election, to run a ballot measure?
The, the price is changing. Every time we look, it's more expensive. It's a frustration of mine, frankly, but it's five figures. Because you're, so the, the election itself is close to six figures, and then for being in it, each question is not six figures. So, it's a five-figure number, I can't tell you. I don't know what it'll cost in two years, but it's a.
We've done it in the past. It, it's been in the 30 to, maybe nowadays to the 50.
But that's the degree of, it's not 200,000, it's not a million, it's, you know, it'll be a five-figure number per question.
I think that we've utilized a lot of staff resource to do it. I don't see us spending a huge amount of money that we don't have to go forward on something that we don't have a consensus on.
Can you say that again?
I said that we've utilized a lot of staff resources to ask them to come back a third time to the council with their research, all the information that they're doing on the staff reports. But I also feel like if we do put a ballot measure on there, it is a substantial amount of money that we're incurring on something that we can't even come to as a consensus. So, I'm saying, is that something really we want to impose more financial restrictions on our city that's already stretched, especially with the amount of staff time that's going into the general plan that we're trying to get through?
The, a, if, if we decided we wanted to put something out there, refer to the voters, staff wouldn't need to address that till, essentially, spring of next year, summer of next year, correct?
Right. The process would start June. But we'd have independent analysis, arguments in favor, you know, that there's that stuff, we'd have to put, that starts in June. We'd probably bring it back.
It would need to come to council for a decision, May-June-ish.
Right. And, and essentially, the major part of the work there is essentially identifying what is the question.
Yes.
The wording of the question we'd want to ask voters would be, that's essentially the work. In other words, I guess my question is, in response to Councilmember Newsom's question, is, I don't see that as highly burdensome on staff. Is that correct, or is?
I think, I think if you were just simply, by the way, this decision never gets easier. And so the staff direction right now is 2-2, and not sure. So, you know, we're, we're really, I can see why it's a tough spot for you as far as how much do we engage in outreach? How much do we, I think if you were just simply saying, hey, the city council wants to know your opinion on whether we should have retail cannabis in the city or not, vote yes or no, whether you want it or not, that's one thing, right. That would, there'd be some staff work, but not like most ballot measures that are put on a ballot have the ordinance already done and all the work, and you're asking the voters, because a voter's not going to know they're voting. Retail can't, well, what kind of signage? Where can it be? Where can it, they're not going to know. And so usually, you put on a ballot the law, and you ask the voters, do you want to approve this or not? If we can't get to a point where you, as a council, want to send forth a law, that would be a lot of staff work, because we wouldn't even know what to put in the question. So, I think that's where, if you want to have this discussion in the spring, we could. There'll still be the same people, the same situation, but I'm cautious about that for you, because we'll wait, and then if you want to ask the question, that's fine, but it's another basket of what? What are you asking the voter, and how do you clarify that? And that's where it starts to get hard, because a voter wants to understand what they're voting on, right? They want the background. They want the information. They want to understand, is a yes a yes? Is a, where's this? And so that's where I'm a little cautious on how much staff work is.
Sure. I think that's a good point, that, I mean, you can't simply ask the question, you know, should a Tascadero allow cannabis dispensaries? Because you're saying, a lot of voters would obviously have more.
You could.
You could, but it, you know, that would, a lot of voters would go, well, yeah, but where, when, how, whatever, understand. In, in, in contrast to that, it, it would also cost, in the low five figures, to do a formal professional survey, correct? Yeah, it would cost in the low five figures to do a professional survey.
Yeah, they're, they're right around $28,000 to $30,000 right now.
And in doing that, you know, a, a, I mean, professional, truly randomized survey of our residents, in that case, you could also ask other questions that, in a survey, you could ask other questions. You, you could get into a few more, not, not three pages of questions like Paso might have done, but you could ask several questions related to this issue, but since you're spending the time and the money, you could ask perhaps any other questions that might be worthy of getting a community response on. So, you could, you could serve another purpose. Is that right?
Yes. If the council wanted to spend $30,000 on a survey, I would certainly hope we could ask a few other questions that were strategic to things that the council wanted to do, for sure.
Right. I think you maybe have an, might even had an example of that, but, okay. All right, I'm just laying that out there as, you know, it sounded like you like the idea of going to voters, but maybe there's more to it, as Councilmember Newsom expressed the concern about staff time, you know, about developing something specific enough. Are you over here interested in doing a, a professional survey?
I think, I mean, given that, that any kind of outreach strategy is going to require some staff time and going to involve some costs, I actually think of, I didn't come in thinking about a professional survey, that that might be a useful next step, given where this council is, that we could just construct a number of questions that would let us get better information on the things that hang us up, about, you know, where and how many, and what, you know, what, whether to do this, you know, given, and does it make a difference if it generates, you know, a quarter million dollars in tax revenue versus 500,000 in, in, in tax, additional tax revenue, or something that helps people to what, would it?
Sure. There's lots of questions that could be asked.
Yeah, of a variety.
Relevant to this issue.
So, I think, rather than, if, if the council's game for this, I'm, I am, I think that might be constructive, because it's going to cost, we are looking at something that is a significant revenue opportunity, that is easily multiples of the cost of this particular outreach strategy, and it would give us a lot stronger data about where our community is, and allow us to craft something that has support and help, and, and give us a way, potentially a way forward, or, or a way to, or a determination not to, given that there's a lot of divided opinion within this council and within our, our community.
Well, and it would give us, you know, factual feedback on our residents. I mean, you know, maybe it comes out 50-50, and we're kind of, you know, still divided, but maybe it comes out 80-20, one way or the other, or something, and that would be really informative. So, Councilmember Peak, haven't heard you comment on this.
A formal survey is fine for certain things. I think this is one of those things. It's like, I'm inclined to kind of agree more with Heather tonight. I think if there was anything, it would be a bona fide ballot measure, yes or no. Because I agree with you, when you get a survey, you're going to go, oh, I love surveys, I'm going to answer this, I'm going to talk to the PG&E guy that calls me from some other state and ask me questions about my power usage. But, someone in town is going to get it, they're going to throw it away. Someone who's really interested in it will answer every single question. I don't think it's a really good cross-section as much as an actual vote.
But when you pay, when you pay a professional polling firm to do it, I mean, they, you know, they look at getting a valid cross-section of residents, and they keep, you know, calling and reaching out to, they do, they don't send you something in the mail that you throw away, or, you know, decide. They keep going at it until, you know, they have a representative sample of the community based on, you know, age, race, income, et cetera, so that they've, you know, you, the whole purpose of paying a professional to do it is you are getting a genuine, you know, cross-section of people, not, not self-chosen responders, not the people who are most interested in the issue, or what have you. So, I mean, that's the purpose of paying for a professional survey. And again, the problem with the ballot measuring, I kind of, I was interested in it, but as staff pointed out, you, you would have to essentially do all this work and really almost come up with an ordinance that we're, we don't have consensus on proceeding with, in order to put that out as a question to the voters. So, it's, it would seem to me it would be more, it would, a lot less time for staff and us to simply develop a, develop a set of survey questions. Staff could use the option, or use the time to also ask other questions of the public, and, and that way it wouldn't take up near as much time, and it would still be, you know, a valid statistical, statistically valid survey, I should say. So, Councilmember Newsom?
I feel like we're still going to be 50,000 or 60,000 in, and this council's still going to have to draft that sample ordinance. I make a motion that we don't move forward with cannabis ordinance.
You mean with changes to the, or just not move forward with a?
Just not move forward with cannabis, because we can't come to a consensus. That's my motion.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know, do we have a second, and I don't know, I mean, about having an alternative motion to engage in a professional survey. I mean, he's looking for some Robert's Rules of Orders here.
There was a motion on the floor, offer of a substitute.
There was a motion on the floor, uh, offer of a substitute motion. There was no second to the first one, uh, the first motion.
I second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, um, can, is there one of us have offered a substitute motion? Substitute motion?
Yeah. Was, I wasn't clear on what the second was, to the original motion or the substitute motion?
I second the original motion.
So we have a motion by Newsom, a second by Peak. We could offer another motion, though, to say, let's do a professional survey on the question.
You have a motion and a second at this point, so you should have discussion on-
Okay, let's discuss that and vote. Any discussion on that, or let's vote on it?
Can you please repeat your motion, just for clarity?
To move forward with no cannabis ordinance.
Or, yeah, or to not move forward with changes, right?
Exactly.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion and a second. I'm, I'm putting out there, we, we could have another motion after we vote on this, but we should go ahead and vote on it. So, uh, no further discussion. Let's roll call, please.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
No.
Mayor Proton Dares?
Yes.
And Mayor Borbo?
No.
Motion passes three-two with, um, Funk and Borbo voting no.
All right. So we're ready to move on to the next item, and that is going to be item H2, Authorization of Inclusionary Housing Funds for Del Rio Ridge. Thank you all for coming in the audience and speaking. We are going to turn this over to Mr. Dunsmore of Community Development.
And I'm going to pass this off to Kelly Gleason, our planning manager, and she's got some great information on this project for you.
Good evening. Glad we made it this far. This next item hopefully will be, um, a little quicker, um, hopefully a little bit of a, a happy item to talk about. Um, the item, uh, is People Self-Help Housing Project on North El Camino Real. They are requesting some additional funding to get their project off the ground and get construction started. So the project is located on the north side of El Camino Real. It's actually just south of the, um, Del Rio Ranch property, um, has direct access off of El Camino Real. It's currently a vacant parcel. They are proposing forty-one affordable units to, um, extremely low, very low, and low-income households. There is a manager's unit included in part of the project. So back in 2020, the city did commit four hundred thousand in affordable housing and loo fees to the project, uh, to get them started. The project application was originally made in 2018, um, and they've been working, uh, that long to get some funding from the state for construction. The city then adopted a deferred impact fee program in 2023. That program was adopted to, uh, use, um, city funds without actually using city funds to help leverage projects towards grant funding. That had a couple of different terms and stipulations associated with it. Um, one of them was a seventeen-year repayment term. That normally works with a lot of state funding sources, um, but this project was afforded accelerator funding, which is a little bit different funding source, and requires a longer loan term period, so they cannot use our deferred impact fee program. So they are requesting their additional funds that would have come from that program, from the Affordable Housing and Loo Fee Fund instead, for a term of twenty-two years. So the original request as a deferred impact fee fund was five hundred twenty-seven thousand five seventy-three, um, that is part of their budget, and so they are requesting that same amount of money, um, to come from the Affordable Housing and Loo Fee Fund. It would go towards a development impact fees, and if there's any overage based on, um, our estimates and calculations, those additional funds would go towards, um, other incidental permit fees for the project. Our current fund balance for the Affordable Housing and Loo Fee, um, program is one-point three million, so we do have the funds to cover this request and their original award of four hundred thousand dollars. Um, as I did mention, this is a hundred percent affordable project, um, minus their manager's unit that they'll have on site, and it does target extremely low, very low, and low-income households, which is a category that we generally need more of to, um, work towards our RENA numbers that are allocated to us by the state. Um, you can see the, uh, unit numbers that will be provided, um, because they're using HUD funding, their percentages are a little bit different than Slow County's percentages, but they are all, um, low or below the low-income threshold, and will count towards those RENA numbers for us. So authorization of the additional loan will allow the project to move forward to construction. They're hoping to pull permits by the end of the year, um, transfer the funds over to their contractor account by, in December. The repayment of, uh, this particular loan would begin upon final occupancy, which is when development impact fees are generally due, and I believe their construction is estimated to be complete in 2027. There are a couple alternatives, as always, with these types of projects. Um, you can recommend alternative amounts or terms to the agreement, you can request additional information, or you can deny the use of the funds. That four hundred thousand would remain as a, a promise that the city already made in 2020, but the additional five hundred and twenty-seven, um, could be denied. So it is staff's recommendation, um, that the council authorize the Director of Administrative Services to appropriate the five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of in loo fee and moderate-income housing funds for the People Self-Help Project at Del Rio Ridge, um, and also direct staff to bring back a loan agreement for council approval at a future date. We're hoping to get that to you, um, should this be approved to move forward at a November meeting. Um, and then did just want to clarify that this is for a hundred percent affordable, um, housing project. Um, I know we're still working with Peoples to work out all of the loan documents and agreements that get recorded with the project, um, but we wanted you to have confidence that these funds would be used for the project as a hundred percent affordable housing project.
What was that affordability level again?
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
In the low, very low, and extremely low categories. Um, and so with that, um, staff's available for any questions. Um, we also have a representative from Peoples who has, um, sat here and listened to some very, um, exciting things this evening, um, and she is available for questions as well.
All right. Thank you. And sorry I had to sit through a long, a, a long session, um, and, and about sewer connection fees, so. Any case, I have one quick question, and I'll pass it on to others. Uh, just to be clear, we're using the funds in the Affordable Housing Fund to essentially pay the fees that a developer would normally, um, pay upfront, and then we're going to give them a long period of time to pay it back later.
That's correct. So we will, yeah, transfer those funds over to our development, um, impact fee and any incidental permit fee account, and then they will pay back the affordable fund over that time period.
Because, I mean, residents moving in, whether it's affordable housing or not, have, have impacts and warrants the payment of development impact fees, just as if they were moving in.
Correct. And those fees are very specific, and that, that account is used for very specific improvements.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Questions on my left? Nope. Questions on my right? Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, I just, I would just want to make sure I understand that the cash flow, that this is essentially, um, the same financial, roughly the same financial deal that we were expecting with the, um, seventeen-year fee deferral, except maybe it's a little bit longer, um, in the sense that with the fee deferral, there's our costs that are incurred when people move in, and this city has, you know, fees, we would, or, that would off, impact fees offset those costs, and then we're not getting them, we've agreed not to get that money, so the city's basically, essentially loaning that, allowing those costs to occur, and then we get the, uh, get the money back in seventeen years to get that. Sorry, I'm not, it's late, um, and I have, I have been more articulate at better hours. But with this, with this thing, what we're doing instead is, we're actually loaning them the money upfront, but we're getting paid our, our development fees.
Correct.
So either way, so now, instead of being out the development fees, we're out the loan, and the loan gets paid back. But either way, we've got some money that's expenses that are out there, and we're, um, letting that, those expenses occur for a period of time, and then we get the money back later.
Correct. Yeah, same amount of, of money, different, different way to get there.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I, I do have another one I just thought of, and it's, how did we arrive at the three percent rate that we're charging as interest? Seems a little low, but how did we arrive at that?
It's, I would say, fairly common in affordable housing to set it at three percent. Um, there are some cities that will do a zero percent forgivable type loan after fifty-five years, that if it maintains its affordability, they'll just forgive the loan. There are certain reasons for tax credit financing, where, uh, a lot of the People Self-Help Housing projects will not accept that type of thing. So, uh, showing the pro forma of having an actual market-type loan, uh, arms-distance loan of three percent helps the investors in that realize, okay, there's, there's a reason that this project can go forward. And the representative from Peoples may be able to explain it a little bit better than that, but we did have a discussion with Peoples about what the rate would be, and in past affordable housing projects that I've worked on with Peoples in other communities, three percent's been the common, uh, interest rate.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll open it up to public comment, if you would like to speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Isabella Valdez. I'm with People Self-Help Housing, and I am the Assistant Project Manager on our Del Rio Ridge project, and I just wanted to thank council, council for the support that the city has provided for the project. This project specifically has been in our pipeline for a very long time, so it's very exciting that we're finally able to push it forward, get it into construction mid-January, um, and it wouldn't be possible without all of you. This funding commitment is essential to making the project feasible, as it helps to complete our capital stack. So we're doing really important work, and again, this, um, project is just going to be so beneficial for the community and on our organization's behalf, because our CEO cannot be here. Um, again, thank you, and we are so grateful for the City of Atascadero's support. Thank you.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind staying at the podium, I want to see if any members of council have any questions of you.
Is the, is the occupant, has something like this, does the occupancy already have like a waiting list, um, of like locals, like Atascaderans that are waiting for this list, or?
Um, we don't have a, you mean a waiting list for tenants, future tenants? We don't have that yet, so we start marketing, um, our lease-up process closer to when construction is going to be completing, which is going to be, um, we're estimating a thirty-month construction period, so that would be about July, August would be construction completion. Um, and our, uh, marketing team starts putting out information on our websites and around the community, uh, months in advance of that.
And generally, when you have projects like this, do, uh, does People Self-Help, uh, try to find tenants that are already in the local area looking for the very, like the, the local area to live?
Uh, yes. Yeah. So we, yeah, we serve our, our own community. Um, this project specifically, uh, eleven units will be set aside for veterans, um, and, yeah, we'll be serving thirty to sixty percent of area median income.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Funk?
There, sorry. Took several tries to get the red light to come on. I assume when, when the time comes for, for you to, uh, fill the units, I noticed you also have some set, units set aside for homeless persons, um, that that would be, you would be part of the, the coordinated entry processes countywide, where people who are in need of housing, uh, that are from, you know, from this area, um, and are, and want to, want to, uh, be in Atascadero, appropriate for Atascadero, would then, the most vulnerable people would be then, uh, moving to the top of the list in a coordinated way.
Uh, yes. So we do work with, um, the coordinated entry system, um, and we'll work with the Veterans Association as well.
Right. Okay. And, uh, I presume you also work with, uh, with Echo and others that, that are aware of both people who, um, are currently in house and people who are, um, at risk of losing their housing or are couch surfing and other things that make them, um, not technically homeless under the definitions that HUD uses, but they're still have very unstable housing and are in desperate need of these kinds of, of units.
Yeah, yeah. There is a population set aside for at-risk of homelessness, so it's kind of like that in-between, I think, population that you're talking about. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Yeah, I, yeah. Okay. That's, that's fine. I think we're good.
Okay. And then we are, uh, connected to, um, service providers as well, so we do work with them.
All right. Thank you. Then I'll bring it back to council for any, any discussion and a motion.
I'd be honored to make the motion. Now, we, we've been desperately looking for this, uh, project for quite some time, and there's a huge need to have this kind of housing to, uh, um, get people out of the creek and keep people from landing in the creek, um, and to take care of our veterans who have served this country honorably and need a little support in being able to stay housed. So I would move staff's recommendation.
All right. We have a motion?
One second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Funk, uh, a second by Councilmember Peak. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Dares?
Yes.
Mayor Borbo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. That's our last, uh, agenda item. We will move on to council announcements and committee reports, starting on my left with Councilmember Peak.
Uh, no committees since last time we met. I did have the honor of attending the Colony Tea, and it was great hearing some awesome stories from days gone by in Atascadero, and, uh, seeing the new crowning and, and the recognition by the mayor for the years of service of the Quota Club and how they've done for our community.
And I have just a cap slow meeting coming up on Thursday, and that's all.
Okay. Yes. I, I just, uh, also went to the tea and realized this is the first year that I have lived here forty years and could have gone to the tea as, on my own accord, and not just be invited as a member of the city council. And, you know, you, forty years makes you feel a little bit like an old-timer until you go to the Colony Tea and you hear the stories from the real old-timers, um, who have been here a lot longer than me. So also, uh, Councilmember Funk and I participated in a creek cleanup on September twenty-seventh. That was interesting. And, um, I'm going to mention along those lines that, uh, uh, we worked on an area next to the West Mall Bridge, and subsequent to that, uh, Alps has built a, an addition to the fence there that goes all the way to the bridge and will help, I think, help keep that area a little cleaner. So, I have had no, also had no committee meetings since our last meeting. We do have a mayor's meeting this Friday here, hosted here in Atascadero, and, um, and we are not having an IWA meeting this, uh, this month, so, Councilmember Funk?
I have a, uh, meeting tomorrow, the, uh, Homeland Services Oversight Council Executive Committee, um, which I serve on, because I'm on the, I'm the vice chair of that group. And then I, as noted, I also, uh, participated in the Colony Tea and enjoyed that experience immensely, as always, um, and the creek cleanup with, um, Mayor Borbo. And I also participated in the Slow Cog workshop that they were advertising when they were here at the last meeting, uh, that was Atascadero, um, Lake Pavilion, um, and got, um, heard the feedback that they got from a relatively small crowd of people, um, regarding, um, road projects and funding.
Councilmember Newsom?
I was invited to the tea, but I traveled so much, so I needed a couple days of recovery. I had the League of California Cities that just got back from, for three days, with our city manager, Mr. Lewis. Great amount of speakers, um, always loved to listen to their issues, going over ethics, everything is always eye-opener. We're very fortunate to be here in this community where we respect one another and agree to disagree, so we're very fortunate to, uh, live in our community. I did have a Slow Cog meeting back on October first. We talked about the financial elements of regional transportation plan, um, that projects are coming in way above the funding needs. They're anticipating construction costs to increase by over two-hundred percent, um, funding cycle 2026. There's very little that can be accomplished without federal or state discretionary grants. With the shutdown, it's impacted, um, what they're seeing- With the shutdown, it's impacted, um, what they're seeing coming forward, but they're not sure what those lasting effects will be on grants and funding, and they too are looking for a local road first potential sales tax measure in twenty-twenty-six.
All right. Thank you, and congratulations on the award you received at the League of Cities Conference. Okay. With that, I believe we are ready. Anything else? Nope? Okay. We are ready to adjourn. Thank you all.